Good morning, everyone. Madam Clerk, roll call, please. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Suizer Brandal.
Here.
Suizer Magzik.
Here.
Suizer Mendez.
Here.
Suizer Pacheco.
Here.
Chairman Quintero.
Here.
All present, thank you.
Welcome to the Tuesday, April 11th, 2023, meeting of the Fresno County Board of Supervisors. We'll begin today's meeting with the invocation and the flag salute. The invocation will be led by District One Supervisor Pacheco, and following the invocation, please remain standing for the flag salute. Supervisor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For today's invocation, I'd like to welcome Pastor Paul Binion from the Westside Church of God. Pastor Binion is a longtime Fresno resident and has been a senior pastor at the Westside Church of God since the 1970s. He also started the nonprofit Southwest Fresno Development Corporation, established a counseling center to meet the needs of our community, and developed an education and career initiative to help students be successful in their educational and professional pursuits. Pastor Binion is a community leader and advisor to Mitty and is also a husband, father, and grandfather. Thank you, Pastor Binion, for joining us here today. Please stand.
Our Father and our God, how grateful we are for this day. Thank you for another beautiful day in our city. We are grateful, Lord, for your mercies, which the prophet said are new every morning. Great is your faithfulness, God, and we certainly are in agreement with that. We're grateful, Lord, again, for the privilege of being in this city. We're thankful, Lord, for the plethora of demographics that make up this great community. We're thankful, Lord, for the men who are in front of us, who serve us, and, God, we ask for your blessing upon them in Jesus' name. And, Father, even with their education and knowledge and background and experience, we all need you, Father. So, Lord, I pray today that you would grant them wisdom, understanding, and knowledge to lead and to govern our great county. And, Father, for all of this, we ask you in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
... of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Agendas are located at the table at the back of the chamber for anyone wishing to follow along. Madam Clerk, item number one.
Item number one, approve agenda.
Okay, are there any comments from board members at this time regarding the agenda? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve.
All in favor? We have first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item number two.
Item number two, approve consent agenda, item number seventeen through forty-six.
These matters are routine in nature and usually approved by a single vote. Are there any members of the board that would like an item removed from the consent for discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to remove item forty, please.
Are there any members of the public who would like an item removed for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I do not wish to remove an item, but I'd like to make a comment on one. I'll check with the council. Today on the consent calendar, we have an adjourned in memory of Mr. Jaime Loza. As many of you are aware, Mr. Loza was a frequent visitor to our board chambers where he expressed his views on many issues, and, to be honest, his thoughts may have not always been clear, but his intentions were good. I'd assume that Mr. Loza would be a fixture in this boardroom for years to come and share his views with us, but Mr. Loza tragically passed away on March 21st. I believe it's a reminder for all of us that we're not guaranteed tomorrow, so we need to live each day to the fullest. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Supervisor. Good comments, and I'm sure we all up here on the dais feel that way as well. With that, I will entertain a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda, which we already have done. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Number three, item.
I apologize, Mr. Chairman, I didn't catch who the motion maker was.
I'll be the first.
What's that?
I'll be the one who made the motion. Buddy seconded it, I think.
Thank you. We now move to item number three, under the Board of Supervisors, presentation of retirement plaque to Ted Cole Pepper, Department Internal Services, twenty-two years of service.
Morning, Chair. Board members, Robert Vash, Director of Internal Services, Chief Information Officer. We're here to talk about Ted after his, what, twenty-two years of service, almost twenty-three. He came to us in October of 2000. You know, one thing I always appreciate about Ted is whenever I went out to fleet to meet with the guys, Ted would tell me what I needed to know and not what I wanted to hear. So, he was always honest up front and, you know, pointed in his remarks, and we had some great conversations and great discourse. I'll have Ken Christensen, Fleet Services Manager, talk more about Ted.
Good morning, Board. Ken Christensen, Internal Services, Fleet Services Manager. It is a pleasure to be here today. I am here to celebrate and honor Ted Cole Pepper's twenty-two-plus years of service as a certified mechanic and licensed smog technician. As a team member of our light-duty mechanic team, which we service and maintain over sixteen-hundred fleet vehicles to support the county departments, he has serviced and performed repairs approximately twenty-two thousand vehicles, performed around forty-four hundred smog inspections during this time. That's a whole bunch of cars and light trucks. Ted came to Fleet Services with his ASC's Master Certified Technician status and likes in smog technician with the state. He then proceeded to obtain his government fleet certification while working at Fleet Services. This led Ted to be a great asset to the county and to Fleet Services. He has been keeping the county vehicles in top working order. Ted was always very dependable and would take on more complicated vehicle issues. He is well-liked by his coworkers and with other Fleet Services staff. Ted would share stories regarding his hobbies, which consist of leatherworking, horses, which include riding and roping, guns, which included reloading and target practice, and fly fishing. Many adventures are in his future. I am thankful for my time with him. It's been a pleasure having Ted on one of my staff, and I wish him the best in his new adventures. He will definitely be missed at Fleet Services. Thank you, Ted, for everything you did for the county. Ted would like to say a few words.
Well, thank you very much for the kind words, Ken. I came here twenty-two and a half years ago, and, of course, I'd been a mechanic for twenty years prior to that, but it's been a wonderful journey. About six months after I started, I got put on patrol-specific, and so for, well, until the Sheriff Department pulled away, I worked on patrol cars. That was a lot of fun. Anyway, I've seen a lot of changes. Changes up there, changes over here. Right now, we have some wonderful bosses here. Ken, I've only worked with him for, what, five years now? Five years out of my twenty-plus, but he's turned out to be a heck of a manager, and I love Mr. Vash. Thank you very much.
Ted, are there any members of your family you'd like to introduce?
My significant other is sitting back here, and she doesn't want to come up.
Okay, I guess, and you're going to be writing a book called Ted's Wonderful Adventures?
Yeah, well, I now have time to spend in my next endeavor, which is leatherwork.
Nice, nice. Any comments from the board? Supervisor Magzik?
So, Ted, I did not get to be here on your first day, but I had the pleasure of speaking with you on your last day, and I want to thank you for your candidness, your hard work, and just being who you are. So, when I think about Fresno County as a family, there's very many, many, many people with unique skill sets, and you're one of them, and I appreciate the time that you've given to the county. Now that you are retiring, it's our loss, but we look forward to your continued engagement with us, so thank you for that.
Thank you, and I appreciate speaking with you on that day.
Supervisor Brandal.
Ted, I'm getting that red light coming on in my car. Wonder if you could...
I vowed not to work on cars for six months.
Oh, right.
Although I broke that because my neighbor called me...
And you wouldn't help.
Monday after I retired.
Oh, wow.
I had to fix his starter.
No, in all reality, I just wanted to thank you for...
I took no money. As I told him...
Understood.
If I get paid, I have to admit that I'm...
I don't think Brandal was going to pay you either.
Right. Pacheco knows me well. Hey, I just really wanted to say thanks for the twenty-two years of hard work at Fresno County. Thank you.
Supervisor?
Been a good team.
Okay, and then if you could email me the little secret on getting rid of that engine light so I can get my car smart. That's a big headache every couple of years. Any comments from the public? Okay. Seeing none, then I'd like to ask Ted for you to come forward and receive your retirement plaque, and if you'd like to, if your significant other would come forward too, we can all take a picture with you. Somebody will take a picture for you.
Thank you. Pleasure. Thank you. And I mean, you're a good...
Right here.
We now move to item number four, under Chairman Quintero, proclaim April 2023 as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
Okay, Director Sanja Bouhey, please. And your designee, step forward to receive a proclamation, please. Good morning, Sanja.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the Board, Sanja Bouhey, Department of Social Services, and I'm here with a number of our community-based organization representatives and DSS. Well, thank you very much for this opportunity to support national, April's a National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and we do this jointly with many other organizations, so I really appreciate an opportunity to do this jointly. I'm going to hand this off in a minute to Kim, but I want to acknowledge that child abuse prevention is everybody's job, and in our county, we really do take that to heart. We do child abuse prevention work jointly with many other organizations and with our Fresno County Child Abuse Prevention Council. I want to acknowledge Esther Franco, who would have done this today with us, but she is not going to be here this morning because she's ill. So, we're going to skip those slides in the presentation, but I want to take an opportunity to not only recognize our partners that are here, but also our partners that spend a lot of hours and effort educating and working in our community preventing child abuse. So, with that, I'm going to hand it to Kim Smith, who is one of our deputies for Child Welfare Services.
Good morning. Good morning. We are having a little technical difficulties, but I'm not familiar. Do you guys have the PowerPoint printed out in front of you? So, in order to honor your time and everyone here, I'll go ahead and get started. My name is Kim Smith, like Sanja said, and I'm one of the deputy directors here for Child Welfare. April, there we go, April is recognized as National Child Abuse Prevention Month, and this presentation will highlight the Department of Social Services efforts to prevent child abuse and neglect in our county. This would have been Esther's slide, and so she's going to come back, I'm assuming, at Oh, we can start with some introductions. I also have here is Program Manager Roy McBirdy.
Good morning. My name is Roy McBirdy. I'm a program manager with Child Welfare over part of our emergency response, our standby after-hours team, and our voluntary family maintenance.
I'm Lowell Enz. I'm the CEO of Exceptional Parents Unlimited, and we're one of the Neighborhood Resource Center contractors with the county.
Good morning, Margarita Rocha, Executive Director for Central La Familia Advocacy.
Good morning. I'm Dr. Jean Marie Karas-McVannas. I'm the CEO of Westside Family Preservation Services Network. We are in Huron and Kalinga on the west side.
Good morning. I'm Becky Kramer, the Executive Director of Comprehensive Youth Services of Fresno.
The department receives thousands of calls a year from a variety of sources regarding child abuse and neglect. In 2022, a little over fifteen thousand five hundred reports of child abuse were filed, and of these, eight thousand three hundred and sixty-one resulted in investigations. One thousand two hundred and thirty-two reports were verified, and one thousand one hundred and four new cases were opened in 2022. Our goal is to reduce child abuse and neglect through long-term investment in targeted, family-friendly, culturally appropriate services in the community. Efforts are focused on areas in Fresno County that have the highest number of child removal rates. The intent is to strengthen services in these areas to increase support and resources to the vulnerable families who are at high risk of entering Child Welfare Services. The primary strategies for these efforts include a creation of network of neighborhood resource centers, also known as NRCs, and the provision of differential response, or DR, services to high-risk families. NRCs serve as the hub of prevention and early intervention by providing families with support, resources, and individualized services based on their needs. DR services support families that have already been reported to child abuse, but where their risk factors are not high enough to warrant continued involvement. All DR services are available at no cost. Core services of our NRC/DR providers include, but are not limited to, parenting support, home visitation, food, clothing, housing assistance, employment assistance, immigration assistance, counseling, peer support groups, linkages to other community resources, and case management. Here today, we do have Lowell Enz from Exceptional Parents Unlimited that will present the slide.
Good morning again. So, in fiscal year 2122, NRCs have helped ten thousand nine hundred and fifty-three families across Fresno County seeking services and support. The Department of DSS has sent twelve hundred and forty-nine DR, differential response referrals to our differential response programs and the Neighborhood Resource Centers. Three hundred and ninety new families accepted the voluntary case management services of these programs in our agencies, and three hundred and thirty-nine differential response cases were closed last year. Sixty-four of the closed cases completed their case plan or showed progress at closure. I'm going to hand it off to one of my colleagues here.
There are thirteen NRC locations throughout metro Fresno and the rural areas of Fresno County. These sites are administered by four organizations that are here, Central La Familia, Comprehensive Youth Services, and Exceptional Parents Unlimited, and then the agency I direct, Westside Family Preservation Services Network. There are currently six NRCs in different rural areas of Fresno County. We have Kalinga, Huron, Kermin, Reedley, Sanger, and Selma, and there are seven NRCs in the metro area. Those sites are in ZIP codes nine three six one two, nine three seven oh three, nine three seven oh five, nine three seven oh six, nine three seven two two, nine three seven two six, and nine three seven two seven. And now I will turn this over to my colleague, Margarita Rocha.
Thank you. Good morning again. I'm going to share with you a short scenario of an actual case, and while the story itself is condensed, I do want to give you a little bit of background to it, that it takes a lot of effort and a lot of touches before we can actually have a client agree to receive services because the services are voluntarily. They have to agree to want the services. So, it takes a lot of touches and a lot of empathy and a lot of understanding with families that we're working with. So, this one is a success story, obviously, for one of our NRCs, that we were able to provide the differential services to the family in need. It was a single mother with an eleven-year-old month child. During the intake, and an intake is a long process as well, because we also have to invite the individual to want the services and feel like they are being acknowledged and respected. The mom stated that she was interested in counseling services and wanted to improve her parenting skills. She also revealed that she was taking medication for depression and wanted to see a psychiatrist, but she did not have the sources and didn't know how to access them. The case manager, which is part of what our programs are at all of these NRCs, was successful in engaging and connecting her to Parent Education Services and with the Department of Behavioral Health to see a psychiatrist. No easy feat to get in the door. She is currently working towards completing her GED in order to attend college and is actively seeking a part-time job to provide for her family. For conversations with her, she had her second job interview and is hoping to get a job soon. The case manager continues to provide support to her while she is working towards her goals, and that is part of the case manager's job, is to stay connected, reinforce, reengage, sometimes handholding, to be successful with outcomes.
Next, I'd like to talk about Families First Prevention Services Act. To give you a little bit more information on FFPS program, we'd like to give a background on what it is and where it came from. The Families First Prevention Services Act, which will be referred to as FFPSA, was enacted in 2018 and is an amendment to the Title IV funding under the Social Security Act. This amendment reforms federal child welfare funding to authorize the use of this funding for specified prevention services. The overall goal for FFPSA is to reinforce prevention services, decrease foster care placements, increase kinship support, and increase overall child well-being. DSS is partnering with Department of Behavioral Health, Public Health, probation, our local community tribes, and the community to create a comprehensive prevention plan to submit to the state by July 31st of this year. The CPP will outline the continuum of prevention services DSS and its partners will provide. Upon approval of the plan, Fresno County will be allocated about eight million dollars, with seven million of that allocated to Child Welfare Service and one million allocated to probation. The total funding may increase depending on the number of California counties that actually opt in. We will be able to use these funds retroactively, dating back to October 31st of 2021 and through June 30th, 2024. This program will allow us to take a closer look at our existing preventative services, expand on those as needed, and work closely with our partnering departments to ensure that we are doing all we can do to prevent child abuse in Fresno County. When we invest, you want to... When we invest in our children, we are investing in our communities. We would like to thank everyone for their participation in preventing child abuse and making Fresno County a better community.
I just want to thank you one more time for allowing us to present. Thank our partners and our staff that are watching this for their daily work and for working on child abuse prevention and intervention services. We will be back to your board with FFPSA plans and the future use of dollars, and thank you very much.
Are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, are there any comments from the board?
Oh, there's a comment.
We have one.
Please step forward and approach the podium.
First of all, I'd like to thank all you all for the service you all provide. My name is Charles Taylor. I'm also a health care provider, as well as the founder of the Amelia Free Foundation, and I'm honored to be here. Our foundation is in partners with Family Option that assists in family living, foster care, and home services as well. My request is that I would have the opportunity to sit with one of you all because I built the foundation based on abuse. And if I would ask the question, do any of you all know what is parental alienation syndrome? Raise your hand. If I ask you all, do you all have known anyone with children, and their parents are going through a divorce or going through a divorce? Raise your hand. Most of us do. Well, parental alienation syndrome is something that I was fortunate to learn while I was in a foreign country, and my case can be found in the European Court of Human Rights. Parental alienation syndrome is about mind control. When parents are going through a divorce and children are involved, sometime the ex they can't deal with it. You can find more about parental alienation syndrome on my website, but I'm thrilled to be here to honor because our foundation is based on exactly what these people spoke of, and that is child abuse. So, I will have to leave my card here where you can find our foundation. If you go there, you will find on our front page, "No child a slave, every child matter, count every neighbor." Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any other comments from the public? Any comments from the board?
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I just wanted to thank Sanja and your team. Thank you for coming up today, and it's too bad that Esther couldn't be here. About maybe a year ago, I did a community meeting, and I had her as one of my speakers. And, you know, so many people don't understand all the detail of what the county provides. And, Margarita, you gave an example today when you read that one story. And when I had Esther at that community meeting, she also talked about a personal story about child abuse, and it's something that, you know, our citizenry need to hear about, that we have these active programs that are really helping lives, and so I just want to let you know, all your work is appreciated. Thank you.
Any other comments? Okay. I have a couple of, wanted to read a couple of paragraphs from the proclamation that we'll be presenting to you today that I think are really explain part of the work that you do, and, well, a good part of the work. So, it says, "Whereas the Fresno County Department of Social Services diligently works to ensure that children remain safe from abuse and neglect and collaborate with community partners to expand child abuse prevention efforts and provide families with a wide array of resources and individualized services. And whereas since 1981, the Fresno Council on Child Abuse Prevention, FCAP, the county's designated Child Abuse Prevention Council, has served the county by coordinating community efforts to approve prevention education services to professionals, parents, and children by targeting the greatest dangers to children and families." And so with that, I'd like to say thank you for the work that you do, and it's something that you work on daily to try and change, and I want to thank you for that. It's a hard job. And with that, I'll entertain a motion in a second to proclaim the month of April 23rd as Child Abuse Prevention Month.
I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes. Please come forward and accept your proclamation. Please come forward and accept your proclamation.
We now move-
Item number six, clerk.
We now move to item number five. Under Supervisor Pacheco-
Five.
-proclaim April 11 through the 17, 2023 Black Maternal Health Week in Fresno County.
Supervisor Pacheco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's my pleasure to proclaim April 11 through 17, Black Maternal Health Week in Fresno County. This proclamation brings awareness to our community about the benefits and importance of healthy mothers and babies and the ways in which we can work together to achieve a healthy starts for everyone. Here today to accept the proclamation is Shante Davies-Bolch, CEO and President of the Black Wellness and Prosperity Center and former colleague of mine on the Fresno County First Five Commission, and she's brought a group of friends with her today. Ms. Bolch?
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for recognizing April 11 through 17 as Black Maternal Health Week. Black Maternal Health Week is a week of awareness and really a platform to understand and discuss community-driven policy, understand what care solutions are, center the voices of Black women and their families, and really provide a platform for organizing efforts and to also highlight the work that's being done to address the problems. I want to just quickly call out some, some numbers that we experience here in the county of Fresno as it relates to the wellness of our Black mothers and their babies. Our infant mortality rate is 10.67 in the county of Fresno, and that's compared to 8.36 overall in California. And more specifically, that's 10.67 compared to 5.19% for white mothers and families. So that's a pretty significant disparity. And then low birth weight, which is babies who are born less than five pounds and eight ounces, there's also a pretty big disparity there, and that matters because a low birth weight baby is born with more complications and health problems. And our preterm babies, it's the leading cause of infant death in the U.S. before age one. So with those disparities, one of the solutions here in the county of Fresno that we've been working on is the Black Doula Network. Doulas are specially trained, non-clinical, and they provide emotional, physical, and educational support throughout the pregnancy. And doulas have been shown to decrease things like mortality, increased rates of breastfeeding, better birth experiences, and having moms who are more informed. For example, our, our doulas will receive extensive train, the trainer, safer sleep, and then they'll be able to go on and provide that safer sleep education to families so that we can help decrease some of the infant mortality that we see due to unsafe sleeping conditions. I want to really thank our partners who have been working with us, our, our county of Fresno program, the Black Infant Health Program. Sabrina couldn't be here, but that's been an integral partner, as well as First Five. And also Cultural Brokers has been key partners. This year's theme for Black Maternal Health is Restoring Black Joy and Autonomy, and this year, we're really going to be focusing again on the, the positive and the joyous progress that we've made, because we are making progress and we do have partners working together on this topic. And there's really joy and partnership, for example, in working with like VIH and First Five. So I do want to turn it over to our close partner, Fabiola, with First Five, to also say a few words.
Briefly, I think it's a reminder that it takes a village to raise healthy children, and we're so grateful for Shante. Fresno County is great, is lucky to have an advocate like Shante Davies-Bolch on behalf of the Black community and Black moms that continue to struggle to reach the optimal childbirth and the optimal well-being that all of us deserve. And the work that Black Wellness and Prosperity Center does is in partnership with others. And I think being here with you all and being, we are so grateful that she was a commissioner for First Five for many years. It's just an example that, you know, we are, we're together in this and we are partners in an effort that impacts all of us, because when one baby's, when a set of babies is not being born healthy, then all of us, all of us are suffering. And I'm just so grateful for Shante. I'm grateful for all of you to recognize Black Maternal Health Week and continue to help us bring awareness about the issues that impact young babies in our county. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And also Pastor Lewis is behind us, who's also one of our very close partners. But just quickly, I wanted to have everyone here just quickly introduce themselves so that our Board of Supervisors can put a face with a name.
Hi, good morning. Cindy Aldo Hernandez with First Five, Fresno County. Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Julie Boonchillern, Project Manager with Black Wellness and Prosperity Center.
Thank you so much for having us. My name is Allison. I'm with Black Wellness and Prosperity Center.
Good morning. My name is Scottan Imet, and I also work with the team of Black Wellness and Prosperity Center. Thank you so much.
And I'm Pastor BT Lewis. I'm an honorary member of the Black Wellness and Prosperity Staff. They shocked me when they took me on a tour. It was a little bit racy for my generation, but I survived. But these ladies, I just wanted to stand with them. I didn't really want to say anything, but these ladies do great work in our community, and I just wanted to stand with them and support their work.
Well, thank you, Pastor. As the Chair of Fresno County First Five, they, I'm graced with their presence on a monthly basis, and Shante talks about doulas and all that. I'm proud to say I'm well-versed and well-educated on that, yeah. So that's good from a farm boy from the country who would otherwise not be familiar with that. So we appreciate everything you do. With that, Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we accept this proclamation.
We have a motion in a second. Are there any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Please come forward.
Viola, thank you. Thank you.
We now move to item number six. Under Supervisor Brandow, Supervisor Pacheco, adopt resolution opposing the city of Fresno's renaming project of East Kings Canyon Road, East Ventura Avenue, and West California Avenue to Caesar Chavez Boulevard, and reject the city's request to effectuate the change within county jurisdiction along the renaming project.
Supervisor Pacheco, before you begin, I'll turn, I turn it over to you. Just want to remind the, the folks that are here today is that I know this is an item that may take a little bit of time, but I want to remind those that are going to be speaking from the public that it'll be an, an item that, that we allow 15 minutes of public input and three minutes per speaker. So we're going to try to stay to that. And if you would like to make comments to make, make this move a little bit faster, I asked that maybe you line up and that way you, you have your, your place and we don't lose any time from folks getting up and walking through, through each row. So just wanted to state that part. Supervisor Pacheco?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I bring this item forward along with Supervisor Brandow after numerous letters and phone calls and comments that we receive from constituents throughout the county, for me specifically, those in southwest Fresno. While I've made a career being one of the co-senior members of this board to staying in our, our lane and doing what is county and trying to stay out of the city business, this is a multi-jurisdiction, multi-agency issue, and therefore, as a representative of southwest Fresno, I could not idly sit by as the people of southwest Fresno felt their voices were not being heard. When we put it on the agenda, Supervisor Brandow saw that, said he's had some concerns with this as well and asked to join me. So we have jointly authored this resolution, again, for me personally and I believe for my colleague. We are not opposed to naming a street for the former labor leader. It's simply about where that location would be in the best interest of all the residents. And for me personally, it's not about putting one culture of another. I believe no culture should be erased in this process. So I'll say more for later. Supervisor Brandow?
Yeah, thanks Supervisor Pacheco. And I really want to agree, first off, to me, this is really not about Caesar Chavez or recognizing or not recognizing Caesar Chavez. I could easily support recognition of Caesar Chavez if I felt it was, you know, in the appropriate spot. For me, this is another example of erasing history, and I think we've erased already too much of our history. And I think probably in some extreme instances, that would probably work, but not in this instance. And I was called to go to a community meeting, which were, was at full attendance, and I didn't, I participated in that at the table that I was at with six other people. There was a survey given, and I was the one that said, okay, since I'm not going to vote, I don't live here close by, I live in North Fresno, since I don't vote, I'll just, I'll take the survey for everybody. So I read the questions and took the answers. And in every single one of them that got returned, and then this also was replicated throughout the room, when the question came, should Kings Canyon, Ventura, and California be renamed to Caesar Chavez Boulevard? If not, why not? There were multiple questions. You could answer because of the cost associated, because of the process was not followed correctly, because of the history that you enjoy living near those streets, and every single response was because of the history. And so that's why to me, there are, and all those other reasons are valid, by the way, but I just don't think people like seeing their history removed right from underneath their feet. And even at that meeting, although it was held in Old Sunnyside, there were members of the West Side at that meeting, and it was a universal response. And it, to me, it doesn't matter if you're Black, Brown, or White. You went to a church on a street, you went to a school on a street, your grandkids went to a barber on that street, you, you have familiarity, you have history, right? So I'm not opposed to honoring Caesar Chavez in some appropriate way, but to rename Kings Canyon, Ventura, and California Boulevards, I'm, I'm against that. And so I have a couple of other reasons, but I'll let the members of the community talk and see if it's even necessary bringing those up. But that's why I felt like I wanted to cosponsor today.
Clerk, would you please explain the light sequence that we have at the podium?
As the chairman mentioned, it's 15 minutes per topic. You have three minutes per person. You don't need to use the three minutes, but you'll see when there's 30 seconds left, the yellow, the, the yellow light will come on, and then when your 30 seconds is up, the red lights will come on. The green light says you have the full three minutes, the yellow light, you have 30 seconds, the red light, you're out of time. Please do keep in mind that if First Five folks speak for three minutes, that's 15 minutes per topic.
Madam Clerk, maybe, maybe with the length of people, so everyone would have an opportunity, maybe it'd be more appropriate today that we go to two minutes?
Will do.
Is the board in agreement with that, or?
Yes.
So each individual has two minutes.
Yeah. That way we can hear everyone's viewpoint.
If you would step up to the podium, you're the first one.
You're going to keep me in line, right? Thank you, Supervisors, for bringing this item before you today and listening to a few public comments. My comments will be brief, and I'm going to address Mr. Brandow's and Mr. Pacheco's remarks regarding the historical content. Fresno and Fresno County are a tapestry, where a family and a community of early settlers that came from all over and settled in different parts of town. And they each, as part of the colony system, established their own culture and heritage. It's part of that. And as you drive down California Ventura and Kings Canyon, those cultures are still there, those colonies are still there. Whether you're talking about a 110-year-old Armenian church that's on the National Historic Register and has a congregation that's been vibrant and was home to William Saroyan and other famous writers and people, a culture of backgammon games, Armenian cuisine, and some Armenian language. A little farther down the street, as you come around the turn, you'll come across Frank Chance Field, a two-time, excuse me, a two-time World Series championship winner on a field that people like Joe DiMaggio played on in spring training. And then to quote something from the PBS documentary on Broken Honor that tells the story of the 244th Army Squadron, as a Japanese boy sits on the barracks, says to his mother, "Why are we here?" And his mother's response is, "Everyone pays a price for freedom. This is our price." Please stand firm and save our culture, save our history, and grow the tapestry of Fresno. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair Quintero. Just want to speak to item six. I'd like to be very clear that our city does not need, nor do we seek, the permission of the county of Fresno to proceed with our action to recognize the contributions of Cesar "Etrada" Chavez, a Latino hero, in our city, simply as background, this effort started 30 years ago. It was approved by the City Council then and overturned by Republican Mayor Jim Patterson at the request of some of these folks in the audience today. This last effort started a year ago. We did notify the residents. A year ago, we received their opposition letter from county residents in Sunnyside. How would they know to write in opposition if they were not notified? Lastly, I'd like to just point out that this county is suing the state, the federal government, to protect local control. You made the argument that locals, elected locally, should make the decisions on naming and renaming of their communities. I would hope that you would be consistent in your position and honor the fact that the local residents have elected a city council in Fresno. The city council has followed its policies to rename city streets, not rename county streets, but city streets in honor of a Latino hero who fought for farmworkers when nobody else would, who fought for Latinos when nobody else would. And to set the record straight, Fresno is diverse. It has a diverse history. Latinos, Chinese, Japanese, Armenians, African Americans were here far longer, and the Native Americans were here far longer than any other group, and just as long as any other group in this community. And yet, not one street is named after Latino in West Fresno or in the city of Fresno. This will be the first time, and negotiating the existence of Latinos in Fresno is an unnegotiable for our community. Thank you for the time.
Good morning. First of all, I, I would like to thank God for giving me the opportunity to be here. Since COVID, I take nothing for granted, and I also would like to thank you for honoring me this time last year, this month, for Asian American Month. I'd also like to thank you for this opportunity to speak about the California Kings Ventura and Kings Canyon. A lot has been said about the cost, et cetera, changing the names, the letterhead and whatnot, and I had suggested that we had named one of our schools, which is the Fresno Unified Adult School, Caesar Chavez Adult School. And that school is very different. It runs from 8:00 in the morning to 7:30 at night, educating- It runs from eight o'clock in the morning to 7:30 at night, educating the community, our seniors, our adults, on a number of things. And I suggested to the city of Fresno that you name 2500 East Stanislaw Street, Cesar Chavez Boulevard. Every year, there is a day of service for Cesar Chavez, and they have a wonderful educational scholarship awards at the Saroyan Theater. Then they marched to the adult school, the Cesar Chavez Adult School. Well, I think it would be just wonderful to turn down that corner and be on Cesar Chavez Boulevard. And whereas we change the letterhead every year to acknowledge this, the president of the board and the clerk of the board. So I would offer that as a humble suggestion and hope that you continue your, your opposing the renaming of that three streets. And I hope it is binding. So I was here 30 years ago with my mother-in-law, and I sure think I've got another 30 years in me. But in case, I'll share this information with my grandchildren who are living in Sunnyside Community. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. Thank you for your time. I want to try to beat the yellow light. My name is Pastor B.T. Lewis of the Rising Star Missionary Baptist Church in west Fresno. I wasn't born here. I came here when I was 16 years old. But California Avenue is significant to my history. West Fresno and that particular area of west Fresno is the only area of our city that carries the history and heritage of my people. Nowhere, nowhere else in the city are we represented like we are in west Fresno. And so I want to also say this very clearly. I, I do not oppose the honoring of Cesar Chavez somewhere else in our city. I do not, I, I'm not opposed to Cesar Chavez having names, institutions, streets, boulevards named after him. But this particular boulevard, this particular street, carries three distinct areas of history that should be preserved in our city. So changing the names of Kings Canyon, Ventura, and California avenues without adequate community engagement, there was no adequate community engagement over this past year. There, there, if there was notification, we have not found them. And our coalition has been reaching out to businesses and residents up and down Kings Canyon. We have not found people that were aware that this name change was coming. And so I'm asking our city council, I know you're not the city council, but I just wanted you to know what we're doing. We're asking our city council to recall that vote, recall that vote back to the dais and reconsider that vote. We're asking them to establish a committee that truly, oh, I'm in the yellow light, truly represents the diversity of our communities and receive their recommendations. And then we're asking them to create a process that genuinely embraces the community at large, the diversity of our community, in an active and robust conversation. God bless you, and thank you for your time. I'm in the yellow light.
Thank you for beating the light, Pastor.
Good morning. I'm Jackie Grazer. I was here a few weeks ago when we first learned of this name change issue, and myself and Aletha brought it to your attention. And I just want to thank you all for listening, because we did not get that same respect from the city council, I have to say. I waited all day to speak at the city council meeting, and unfortunately, half of the dais had left by the time I got to speak. Mr. Arias was one of the people that left. I'm very glad he's here today to hear me speak.
I think he left again, but.
Did he? Oh, okay. Well, done deal. That was the phrase that our community read in the newspaper before anybody had been notified of this. And to this day, there still has not been any formal notification from the city of Fresno to the residents and businesses on Kings Canyon, which is in contrast to the false narrative which is being put forth by the city council. They say that they have been working on this for a year. They have not been working on this for a year. They had a public workshop in July of 2022 that we found out about, just offhandedly, we watched the video of this workshop. An entire process was laid out of how to properly name and rename a street. They have not done one thing on that list. We are, yes, absolutely, it is because of the history. However, it's also because of the lack of process, lack of community engagement that we have not been afforded. We have been meeting. The best thing that has come of this entire process is that we have become very good, close friends with the west side of Fresno and the, and the central part of Fresno. So there is a silver lining to all of this. We are, we are very close, closely knit community, and no issues with, with naming a street after Cesar Chavez. And I would like to personally volunteer to sit on a community committee to help find a street to name after Cesar Chavez. Thank you.
Hi, Debbie Christian. I just want to say, the bottom line to everybody being here is to honor Cesar Chavez in a reasonable way. Reasonable, not change. I'm not proponent for changing street names, but that's my cup of tea, because I just think it creates too many changes. But why not do a monument with a life history? Just do a reasonable thing, instead of putting so much turmoil into everybody's life to have to change what history has written in stone. So please think about that. Let's do it a different way. And there's a lot of different ways to do that. Thank you.
Hello, I really want to thank you for putting this resolution on your agenda today. And the points that I would really like to make is that our contingency did not discover this until two days before it showed up on the consent calendar for the city council. So Mr. Arias is incorrect that we had known about it and there was process, because there, there wasn't. We, we stumbled on it and showed up, and we were appalled. So silver lining, we met some friends, and we are all committed to keeping the history and the honor of California Ventura and Kings Canyon Road, and what it has meant for really the history, the rich history of Fresno. But I, I did want to make that very clear, that, that we were never noticed. We've had petitions signed, hundreds of people signing that they knew nothing about it, and it was submitted to the city. And, and I really just want to make sure that it is as transparent and go through due process so that people's voices can be heard. So thank you very much. I, I'm, thank you for hearing us, and I was there with Jackie, and half of them were not there, and they had waited all day. So thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is William Arm, and I'd like to commend Supervisors Pacheco and Brandau for the way they've put the motion into. And, you know, I like Mr. Brandau and the way his historical background in preserving our history. You know, how can we change the history that we have? You know, we have a, over a hundred-year-old church that's on the National Register of Historical Places. William Saroyan wrote about it in his book, about growing up at the corners of Ventura and M Street. And from that historical background, I mean, I'm sorry to say, it's difficult to get away from history. And we should get, and we should stay with our historical backgrounds. So thank you once again for putting it on the agenda as you did. Really appreciate it.
Cesar Chavez Boulevard, Cesar Chavez Boulevard, Cesar Chavez Boulevard. Yo soy Guadalupe Gutierrez. My name is Guadalupe Gutierrez. I thank city council for backing up and voting and us having the street Cesar Chavez Boulevard. I'm just here today to make sure that you also take the same decision, even though we have two people here that are not in favor, but we'll pray for them, because we all need to work together. I've been raised in the West Side. I've been there on California Street. I've been raised by Valley Medical Center, right by Kings Canyon there, too. So the thing is that Cesar Chavez is about love, about unity, about people being together, all of us. How beautiful in the West Side, each time I'd be passing by there, and then we have Reverend Dr. King. Reverend Dr. King and Cesar Chavez trabajaron juntos. Cesar Chavez and Reverend Dr. King worked together, and that's what we all need to do, work together. And other people of all cultures. Sigamos adelante, hacer la historia para nuestros hijos. Let's go forward and do this, and do history for our children, y para las personas de más edad, and also for the seniors. Gracias, Dios los bendiga. Thank you, God bless.
Good morning. My name is Sarah Pilibos. I'm here to represent our company, Stephen Investments. We're an owner and operator of a 17-acre commercial property on Kings Canyon Road. It represents about 30 businesses. And we did not receive, nor have I ever seen, any notification from the city, and we're local, as in fact, we live in the area, nothing about this change from the city. So I am very encouraged now that it's come before the county and that the position that is being taken or the purpose of the motion, we are deeply in favor of, from a business perspective and from also a practical perspective, because the street actually names where it goes. And it serves a very practical, sensible purpose for people that don't know the area, that are here to enjoy the area and its history and its locations and what they represent. My background also has 30 years' experience in the hotel business, and I can tell you, when the name of a street tells you where you're going, it's extremely helpful, and it doesn't cost you anything. So from a very practical standpoint, this is not a political issue for me. This is simply a matter of what seems reasonable, what seems practical, and what seems to be the result of need. The need may be to name a street, but maybe it need not be this street. It doesn't serve much of a purpose other than honor, and I don't think you have to pay that kind of a price for honor. Thank you.
Okay. My name is Martha Yadaris. As you know, I was a letter carrier for 34 years. You know what problem that street cost, I mean, cost us? When I was delivering mail at Kings Canyon, this man says, where's the, I said, just go straight on Kings Canyon. He comes back to me and he says, but it's Ventura. I say, it's the same street. They did it over and over again, and they're still doing it for the post office, for the letter carriers. How many of you know that? None of, a lot of people don't know that. It was Kings Canyon, Ventura, and California is the same street. And none of them did that. That would, that would take that problem away. Also, they, I know I heard some ladies complaining about you have to change your, your driver, your cards, your business cards and all this stuff. Come on, ladies. Some of you have been married three times. How many times do you have to change your driver's license, your social security, your, your checking account? That's not a problem. Let us Hispanics have a name under the Cesar Chavez for our kids. I have five kids, and they're all professionals. He's an investigator for the county. He was in our congregation, a nurse. You know, we have one that just graduated. He's computer engineering. He just finished his master's. Let them be proud. Cesar Chavez was the one, how many of you have picked grapes? I know, maybe some of your parents hunt sell. He changed it so they could have bathrooms. And when we picked grapes, I picked grapes, you had to go wipe your butt with leaves, because there were no bathrooms. There was no cold water. There was no water for you. He did that for us, and a lot of you don't know that. So please, think about it. Let us be proud. They want to name a little street standing after him. Why? So it could be hidden? How many, okay, they say the history. How many Hispanics live on Kings Canyon and Ventura? The majority are Hispanics. Please do something for them.
Gloria Hernandez, I'm here to address all the NIMBYs, not in my backyard. Cesar Chavez gray, let's go do a statue, let's go name another street, but not in my backyard. That's what I keep hearing over and over all the past year and this year. It's not my fault they didn't know about it. It's not my fault they don't look at the agendas. It's not my fault they didn't attend the budget hearings when this issue came up last year. It's not my fault that they just woke up to politics. Yeah, I have nightmares of Kings Canyon. I got escorted out of a field when I was organizing with scissors up to my ribs. I was organizing for better working conditions. That's my nightmare on Kings Canyon. I shop on Kings Canyon. So do a lot of our people. They don't take that into effect. They say we don't pay taxes. Who's paying the sales taxes at Walmart, at Home Depot? You know, these NIMBYs have got to wake up and get on the ball and read the agenda. And just like Miguel said, how dare you? One minute you're talking about local control and you want to sue, and now you want to step on the city council's control? How dare you? You should be ashamed of yourself.
Hi, I'm Olga Valle, and I'd like to thank you for putting an agenda, but it, it makes me really sad, especially Mr. Pacheco. You know, I thought, you know, being in the ag industry, I would have thought more, more of you. This, the name, Cesar Chavez Boulevard, I thought it was great, because it would go right and intersect with Martin Luther King. They would, they've been together in history, but also it would be here. We can make a lot of excuses and by, you know, comments. We've heard that they've had meetings and meetings and meetings, and we saw them busy working to get, you know, petitions. We have petitions too, petitions from the, the businesses along Ventura. And have you seen the breakdown of how many Hispanics are on California? Have you looked at that? And yes, we're both minorities. We're not here to fight, but how many of them, of all of us, especially the ones on, on, on the future Cesar Chavez Boulevard, all the way down? How many, how many eat? How many eat from the hands of ag workers, farmworkers, campesinos? I was a farmworker. I was a campesino since, I couldn't wait to be one, because then I wouldn't, I know it sounds bad to babysit. I used to babysit till, from when I was second grade, all the way till I was 11 years old. And I couldn't wait. I loved it, but it was hard. But think, think, how many teachers, professionals, attorneys have come out of that, especially with the inspiration of Cesar Chavez? But everybody eats from, from there. So, and we're, it's not supposed to be a divisive thing, which they have done it the other day. They chased me, they basically followed me all the way to my car and saying this was divisive. Well, only they are being divisive, because, hm? So think about that.
Excuse me, our, our time is up, but what we're going to do is, the lady in the back, we'll hear three more after her. So we'll, we'll continue. Up to her? Okay, go ahead. The three left, the three that are left then.
Thank you, gentlemen. Bob McCloskey here. I live in the Yokets Valley. I just, I just want to ask people, what are they talking about when you erase culture? What does that mean? The Kings Canyon area was first proposed as a national park by John Muir as early as 1891. The year after the creation of Sequoia Park, it bears the name of a river that in 1805, a Spanish explorer, the Rios de los Santos Reyes, a river of the Holy Kings. It's named after the kings of Spain. Hello, what are you talking about when you erase culture here? And I, I really object to that trope. The Europeans are using that, erasing European culture, you know, Donald Trump uses it. You know, Donald Trump uses erasing culture. It's a trope, Mr. Brando. It's a trope. Everybody up here that says that is using a racist trope. Let's face it, people. We're not erasing anything. What we're trying to do here is honor Cesar Chavez. I helped in the boycotts. I helped organize labor. What we need to do here is honor the workers, the workers. That put the food on your table. That put all the food on your table, these farm workers. It doesn't just honor Cesar Chavez. We need to think about honoring farm workers with that name also, because he was such a leader of farm workers. So as you think about, when you sit in your comfortable home, Mr. Magsick, not looking up...
McCloskey, address the chair, please.
He never looks at me. I don't know why. It's rude. But anyway, sir...
Can I ask you right now?
Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Let's honor Cesar Chavez. Let's honor farm workers. And let's not use any more racist tropes about erasing white history. This river was named after the kings of Spain by John Muir, who's a known geneticist. John Muir was a geneticist. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
My name is James Marshall. I've been in this town since 1945. So I've seen a lot of it in my seventy-eight years. Kings Canyon was my street as a kid. In fact, this room was our playground. We used to have permanent park benches out here. And when we were real young, we could come down here and play checkers, chess, and dominoes with the old people. But to change this road, I was at the city council meeting last week where we were put off. They kept me from 9:30 in the morning till 5:30. What these young ladies said, I had never been disrespected so much in my life. They stated that we were not going to be able to speak about it. After I spoke about some homeless stuff, they took the next thirty people in favor of the road change and talked to them. I waited through their lunch hour. I waited through their afternoon break. And finally, I got to speak at 5:35 that evening. Okay? And I let them know that the town... They didn't know that that road had been changed once before and it died under its own weight. Okay? But my thing is, and it's nothing against Cesar Chavez, but he did hire and use some thugs back in the old days. He used the Teamster Union. And there's a lady that's alive on Kings Canyon Avenue. Her last name is Terosian. She's ninety-four years old. Her son got shot by one of those workers. His name was Atomic Terosian. You might know him. Ended up going to be a football star at Fresno State. But at seventeen years old, him and his uncle Leo, which Leo is still alive today, was in Arden, not having anything to do with them. They did the packing part where they used to shoot in the old days. They used to shoot the ice into the boxcars. And then as the boxcars went across the country, they'd shoot them again. It wasn't done with trucks like it is today. So I think, and the gentleman that is trying to change this, I ended up having to take, is when he was running against Sal, had to take his bowl off of the property that the Terosians owned. I got permission from one of them to put him up. The other one says, "No, the scars are still too deep."
Sir, your time is up.
They had to take him down. Anyway, thank you for your time.
My name is Hester Hensley. And I'm here opposing the name change. The reason is, I have to go back, way back to the forties, fifties, and part of the sixties. Most of the people working the fields then, you probably remember, were the black people. Very few Mexicans were working at that, in the forties, fifties, and sixties that I remember, because I was here. But I wanted to say is that we paved the way, but we never thought about changing that street name, any street name. We paved the way. We paid the price. And I want to add too, I'm not disrespecting Cesar Chavez or anyone else that's for the street change. But to keep comparing, keep comparing Cesar Chavez with Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. is not something that I would do. Because I don't remember him getting shot down. I don't remember him getting stabbed. I don't remember him getting jailed. I mean, he did some fasting. He did a lot of stuff. But I don't remember him getting bit up by dogs, sprayed down by water holes. I don't remember him getting beat down at all. But I'm just saying, the truth is the truth. There's no comparison, not to me. You say, "Is freedom of speech?" That's my speech. I don't have no comparison. He did a lot, but not for us. And I can say that truthfully. I want to say too, California Street is representing our state. Our state is named California. That's the main reason. I don't want California Street changed. Where are you going to put California Street at? You're going to just erase it? No existing? California Street represents California State. Thank you.
Thank you, Hester, and thank you all for your comments. With that, I'll bring it back up to the dais and receive additional comments from the board. Supervisor Magsick?
So I've got a couple of comments. First to our CAO, Paul Nerland. So Paul, has the city ever formally reached out to the county to engage in a discussion about the renaming of Cesar Chavez Boulevard from, I think, Temperance all the way out to Marx?
So when they passed the resolution, there's references to the county, but there was no communication with the county until on April 3rd. I had a meeting with the city manager. And at that meeting, she gave me a letter that notified me about the resolution and just indicated what it said. So that was really the only communication, and that was well after it had been approved.
I think it's important to set the record straight about the process because, you know, at the end of the day with government, there are decisions that we make that some people support and others do not. But the process does matter. And it's important for you to be able to look at your government and know that you'll have an opportunity for your voices to be heard. And where I've been frustrated a little bit in this process is, you know, as I look at what's transpired really over the course of the last six months, a lot of people who I represent in Sunnyside have reached out to me. And my comments to them are, send me emails, send me phone calls. And what I will do is I'll make sure that your voices are heard in and at the city of Fresno. Two, where I get frustrated a little bit is this roughly ten-and-a-half-mile section that they want to rename is not totally in their jurisdiction. There are large sections that are in the county jurisdiction, and it should have triggered a year ago for the county to be involved in this process. And we just heard from our CAO saying that the only formal conversation that took place was April 3rd, which was just really a mere ten days ago. And so that really is unacceptable. I do take issue with some of the comments today. What bothers me most is when I see people pitting one individual against another or one group against another. Because in the United States of America, we are one nation under God. And we have a government which is supposed to be by the people and for the people. So what do we do where there is division? The first thing we need to be doing is sitting down and having conversations with each other. And many times, that does not take place. That did not take place with the renaming of this roughly ten-and-a-half-mile section that the city of Fresno is so focused on. So for me, that's where I need to apologize to all of you because really, that's... The process should have begun with everyone who lives along that corridor, and it just didn't take place. So I hope many of you feel like your voices have been heard. I have heard you, and I appreciate all the comments. So thank you.
I think that couldn't have been said any better. I also, comments made by Reverend Lewis have been spot on since the very beginning of this. And really, you know, we can beat this horse to death. But, you know, I think what Nathan said was well said.
Well, thank you again. First, I'm going to...
Oh, go ahead, go ahead, sir.
The, first of all, I'd like to talk a little bit about California Avenue and my background with the West Fresno community. I spent some of my elementary years and junior high years in West Fresno. And it's the, was the location where the Martin Luther King School is now. It was a little Catholic school there called Our Lady of Mount Carmel. And I got to know many of the families in West Fresno over the years. My dad worked for a steel company right across from where Rescue Mission was on G Street. We shopped in West Fresno. But more importantly, I got to know the love and pride of the West Fresno residents and what they had for their community. And I often tell people that I was raised in southeast Fresno, but I grew up in West Fresno. So there was a lot of learning that went on for me there. One of the couple of historical facts that you might be interested in, the first United Farm Worker Convention was held in Chinatown. And that, Valerie, was a few doors down from your parents' restaurant, the Ocal Theater. One of the ladies that has gone unrecognized in West Fresno, I got to know her very well, was a lady by the name of Suti Douglas. And Suti was the first lady that presented the Hot Meals Program in Washington, DC. And it was because of her testimony that the Hot Meals Program exists today. So there's a lot of history to think about there. Wanted to ask, is there any member of the Chavez family here today? I met, I met Cesar Chavez when he first started organizing the union through my brother. My older brother Jess was very involved with the union. And so I attended some of the meetings with him. And that's how I got to know about the union and what it stood for. Then a few years later, in the eighties, I got to know Cesar very well through my good friend, Tino Aguilar, who befriended him. And Tino was involved in the first housing project that the United Farm Workers did on Manning Avenue over between Reedley and Parlier. And that, that housing project, he wanted, his dream was to make that for the farm workers that, when they retired, they'd have enough land in their back lot to raise fruits and vegetables. But, you know, I believe, I got to know him that well, that I believe if he were alive today, he would decline the name change and the million dollars to help businesses and residents with the address changes. I believe he'd say there are greater needs in our community. Instead, I believe he might ask the money be given to a nonprofit that is helping Fresno County's homeless population. A nonprofit such as Pavarello House, they need to expand their kitchen as the homeless population rises. Or the Rescue Mission, who bought the old Sierra Hospital on Dakota Avenue to provide housing for the homeless. He would say, a homeless population that includes farm workers that were unable to make ends meet due to their age, healthcare needs, disabilities, limited income. And that's just a few of the needs that I believe that he would talk about. I'm not here today to argue or criticize the council's decision, nor the supporters of the name change. I respect your position. But I still believe he would say there are greater needs in the community. And the, to tell you though, that kind of, my conversations with him, you know, really ingrained a lot in what he represented or wanted to accomplish. The, I recall in the early eighties, the United Farm Workers Convention was held at the convention center. And he had asked me to, if I would be one of the ones to help in organizing that convention. And I was honored because he gave me a book where he wrote about the union. And it says, "To Sal Quintero, best wishes and many, many thanks for all your work for us. Cesar Chavez, 9383." This is the book. The other, the other thing that he honored me with is, and I haven't seen too many of these, he gave it to the folks that helped organize that convention, was a belt buckle with a United Farm Worker logo on it. I'm very honored that he gave that to me. As far as the recognition that we've done locally and that I've been, I've contributed to, is that the, there was, when I served on the city council, the United Farm Worker Foundation came to see me, that was Paul Chavez, said, "We have a housing project that we want to do affordable housing on Kings Canyon." Okay? Do any of you know where that's located at?
Yeah. Okay.
It's a beautiful, it's a beautiful affordable housing project across from Walmart, and it's called Las Palmas de Sal Gonzalez. It's not the Sal Gonzalez that, you know, today, it was his father. And I knew him well. They named that, that project after him. But they came to see me to ask if I would be helpful to them through the city process to apply to the city of Fresno for CDBG housing monies that came through the feds. So I worked with them on that initial project to make that happen. And also, as far as the work in recognizing Cesar, I was the first one to contribute to the statue that stands today at the Peace Garden at the university. Dr. Luz Gonzalez was one of the ones that organized that. And then also the Cesar Chavez statue at the adult school. And Venancio, you were one of the, on the committee that helped organize that. So thank you for doing that. Also, the Cesar Chavez celebrations at the convention center that was sponsored by El Concilio de Fresno. I contributed to that and as they were very successful and organized. And the, those are just some of the things that I say go, that we've done and worked on. So there's a lot of history there. But I just wanted you to understand my background and what I've been able to do in terms of being helpful. And with that, I respect everybody's comments and hope that we can work together on any future endeavors. With that, do I have from the board a motion in a second to approve the resolution?
Well, actually, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a few final comments. I would like to thank the people for participating today. And I would say, for the most part, being very respectful in their comments. And quite candidly, it would have been easier for this body to just ignore the issue and not have the lively discussion we had today or the criticism that we will receive. Because no matter what happens, there's really no winning on this issue. And we will receive criticism easier, either way. And again, the easier way would have been for us to avoid that. But we're not known for taking the easy way or avoiding the hard work or having the tough discussions. We're doing what the city should have did to the city of residents. So we've provided that forum. And they're right, the ladies came forward, they asked for that. And I want to make it clear, southwest Fresno is represented by two representatives, the city representative on the city council and the supervisor. And I alone in District One represent all of the southwest residents on this board. And when they come to me, I will listen to them and do what I can to address their issues and their concerns. That is my job. And I want to tell you, you have been heard. I don't care if there's a thousand people, if there's a hundred people or ten people. When you come to me, I will listen to you and do what I can to help you. I come from the private sector, and I believe in win-win solutions. The problem is, when you enter politics, generally, there are no win-win solutions because we have those on the left and those on the right. We have the conservatives, we have the liberals. And for those of us that are in the middle that just want to do the right thing, we get shot at from both sides. And that's politics, and that's why a lot of good people don't run. And that's the state of our affairs. But my colleague and I, Supervisor Mendez, we have an ag background. We have our own business. We don't need this job to support our families. But we believe in the old school where our country was founded, that people like us step forward. We come do our time for the greater public good, and then we go home to our farms. And I am a fourth-generation farmer, and I'm very, very proud of that. And I respect all of our farm workers. Without them, we would have no ag industry in the state of California and in Fresno County. County. I recognize that every day, because I'm a dairyman and I work every day alongside my farmworkers, every day. We don't get Christmas off, we don't get holidays, and all the people that are in that industry have the same thing, just like us, and I have the great and utmost respect for them. So much so that this board gave me the privilege, when the pandemic came and we had the tier system, that we petitioned the state of California, and we got an exception to the rule, and with Supervisor Brandal's help, he was the chairman at that time, we had a pilot program, we went out to the rural west side in the city of Mendota, and the farmworkers in Mendota were the first ones in the state of California to get the vaccine that nobody else could get. And this board did that. We stood up, we recognized the importance of those in agriculture, those that are doing the work, that we feed our face with every day. And we went out there and we gave them the vaccine, and they were first in line, first in line. And I want to be, yeah, that's right. And our farmworkers, they deserve that. And I want to be clear, I am not, I am not, and again, I don't want to speak for my colleague, but he can, big boy, he can do it himself, I am not opposed to naming a road after Caesar Chavez in any way, shape, or form. I am opposed to erasing one culture over another or putting one above another, because we're all equal in this country, and we should do that. There are a lot of other ways to do that, I believe it's appropriate, and as the one speaker said, "Don't step on the city council" and all that, we are not stepping on the city council, and I fully respect their authority. They can do anything they want within the city limits of Fresno, because the people elected them, and you get what you pick for. So if they want to do that, good luck to them. But those streets that are jointly owned with the city and the county of Fresno, we do have a say. We do have a say, and we will not be stepped on, nor the residents that I represent will not be stepped on, and we will be equal to that. We've not even addressed the issue of the EMS, the one lady was very gracious and said the confusion of the streets and all that, and that's right. If this goes forward without consultation of the county, there would be a huge detriment to the emergency medical system, because there will be so much confusion, it's going to delay service to those people that need it most. Whether your house is on fire, or you need treatment in an ambulance, or getting to a hospital, and all that, it will cause confusion. And we need to address those issues. So any street that is with the county of Fresno, if we are successful today in not passing this, they will not get that name change, because they need to consult with us. However, those within the city limits of Fresno, I will state again, the city is free to do whatever they wish, but those of us that are in the county that we represent, you will not be allowed to do that if this resolution goes forward. So again, I respect the rule of three. I'm hopeful my colleagues, from what I've heard today, will support this resolution and help me give the people of Southwest Fresno a voice, because they have not been heard and have that opportunity, and we gave them that opportunity today. So I thank you, Supervisor Brandal, for co-sponsoring this with me.
Did you make a motion, Supervisor?
Well, if you're done, yeah, I would make a motion that we oppose the naming of the Caesar Chavez on those jurisdictions that are within the county limits as presented on our.
All right, and I'm gonna, thank you, and I'm gonna make a couple final comments also, and I'll try not to belabor it, but I do want to say, Chairman Quintero, your history, that you, your personal history with Caesar Chavez, that you just eloquently went over, all the hardships, the amount of time and energy you put into that battle, that was very beautiful. I've just got to say, I didn't, I wasn't prepared that you were gonna talk about it like that, and you have a perspective that the four of us don't have, and so I want you to know, that was beautiful. I wanted to, first, I would say, I would readdress the folks who are really adamantly they want these streets named after Caesar Chavez, because I'm gonna attempt again to say it, and I hope that people can hear. It's so hard to hear each other these days, but this body is not opposed to honoring Caesar Chavez, and I'm not. It's about what Supervisor Pacheco, Supervisor Quintero, Supervisor Mexican, Supervisor Mendez have talked about. We don't want to, we don't want to elevate one cultural position by diminishing another. We would be glad to find another street that doesn't have this connection to these communities to honor Caesar Chavez. And so it's not about, in our minds, in my mind at least, it's not even close to being about Caesar Chavez, or dishonoring him, or honoring him. It's about getting it right and honoring the history of the residents of Fresno County. Now, I would have gladly stopped there, but Councilmember Arias felt obligated to come over and address the body, and I want to respond to a couple of things that he said, because there were some inaccuracies in there, according to what I've been researching. For instance, when I first heard about this, I was shocked, like many folks were, and I called up our Public Works and Planning Department, I talked with Steve White, who's the director, and I said, "Was the county of Fresno ever consulted on this name change?" And he said, "One year ago, we were told that it could happen." So he said, "Supervisor, I requested, keep a surprise as things move along," and from that moment on, never another word. Okay? So Fresno County is a partner on these streets. So we own jurisdiction of many sections of these streets, so we were never included. So when Miguel says that, you know, "Everybody was included, you got noticed," not very accurate, okay? And I, surprisingly enough to my colleagues, still have friends on the Fresno City Council, and it surprised you who some of them are. But I have friends on the Fresno City Council, and we have conversations. And I said, I called up three of them, and I said, "Hey, here's what I'm hearing, that you didn't notify the residents." And they all swore, "We did, we did, we notified, everybody knew about this." So, you know, Ronald Reagan said, "Trust but verify," right? So I'm hearing this from my council, former colleagues, that folks were notified, but I decided to verify that. And every time that I asked a question to many different individuals, "Were you told about this ahead of time?", the answer was always, "No." Okay? Now, there might be, you know, a small percentage of folks that knew all about this, I get it, but for the folks that we heard from today, they weren't, they were never engaged in this conversation, which brings me to another point, I'm about to wrap up. As a former city councilman, I can tell you this, when the city wants to do something, and they think you're in favor of it, they will hold 25 different community meetings. But when they're sketchy on the response of the citizens, then they do things on the down-low. This one was done on the down-low, okay? And, you know, the city of Fresno makes a lot of rules for its citizens. I remember all during the time of COVID, you know, they made a lot of rules, and God help you if you even bent one of those rules. But in this case, they have rules that they didn't even follow themselves, okay? So it is about the history, but it is important that the process was completely blown, and people were not, people who have stake in the game, skin in the game, were not brought to the table and held a valid conversation. And even, they were told that there was going to be another council meeting to address this. That council meeting got scrapped, the decision was made, and people were told tough luck. Now, he said, "We don't need the county of Fresno," that's also kind of inaccurate. I asked for the email or for the letter from the city manager, Georgianne White, April 3rd, again, just recently, a week ago. "So I have directed via the council's resolution to notify you of their action. If the county is not interested or supporting a renaming the county portion of the street, the city will proceed with only the areas that are exclusively under its jurisdiction." So many of you might not even notice that, when we say, if we say no today, that the city is still gonna play a game with portions of that street. And I think that they should rehear the entire thing, because it's not what they voted on a couple of weeks ago. So there was a lot of inaccuracies by the council member, and I'm not here to bash him in all of his viewpoints and all of his positions, but I have to make a, I have, I mean, we have to know, you have to know the truth, this was not a transparent situation. And we at the county are trying to make our role transparent, so that's what today's meeting about. By the way, I got texted during the meeting, during today's meeting, I mean, just 30 minutes ago, and it said, "You know, you guys don't have to take a vote." The truth is, we want to take a vote, we want to be clear, we want to be transparent. So, anyway, with that, I will second the motion.
We have a motion, and I'll ask, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all. Item number.
Mr. Chairman, this is the time where we would take up the consent items. We had one consent item pulled from your consent agenda by Supervisor Brandal, item 40, under Public Health. Approve and authorize the chairman to execute Third Amendment to agreement with the Regents of the University of California, San Francisco, to revise the scope of work for COVID-19 and other communicable disease services.
Mr. Lucchini?
Yes.
Yeah, can I proceed?
Hold on a sec, Mr. Lucchini.
Oh, sorry.
Supervisor Brandal?
No, I was just gonna ask, I was gonna set the table, Director.
Oh.
And just real quickly, you know, I pulled this to learn more about it, you know, I've got some questions about it, but why don't you give us a brief overview of what item 40 is, and then we'll have a conversation.
Sure. Item 40 is one of our items that we've had, you've brought to your board in the past. They've provided great services for us during this COVID emergency, providing vaccine, COVID treatment, COVID screening. The last time we came to you guys, I forgot to say, David Lucchini, Director of Public Health, we also added other communicable diseases they could follow, work on, so influenza was added in the last amendment we brought to your board last year. Also, we could use them for, remember, the Mpox, I know it's a year ago, and it's kind of died down, but Mpox and monkeypox. So this is a great asset with UCSF to provide these types of services, once again, treatment, screening, diagnostic screening, and vaccine for a lot of our disadvantaged communities, because not only did they have the static site, which is what they're closing, but they're going to be more focused on the mobile sites, going around urban and rural areas to provide services to these areas.
Okay, and so thank you for that overview. Now, it's COVID money that's coming through the federal government, it's no cost of the county.
And some immunization money, too.
Okay, but it's no cost to the county, is that correct? But it is cost to the American taxpayer.
It's a taxpayer, absolutely.
Okay. So, but I want to see if there's enough value to gain my support, okay? Are the mobile units, which I do consider this a great outreach to our community, because we've got 6,000 miles in Fresno County to cover, these mobile units are fantastic. Is their goal still, at this late date, with COVID being declared over by the president, and then finally by the governor of California months later? I mean, why are we still taking COVID money, and are we really going out to work on COVID?
We are still working on going COVID, and the reason it's still important, even though the emergency's over, the virus is still with us. You've still got 50, 60 people hospitalized with COVID in our local hospitals. Plus, we've got that tool that we've been utilizing, which is a wastewater management surveillance that tells us how much COVID virus is in our wastewater in some of our jurisdictions. So that has been a good predictor to when the virus is starting to increase in our community. So having these services ready to go, to start screening people when they need it, when they're getting sick, screen and treat with antivirals that are still effective, at the same time, this mobile van will also screen for hypertension, type 2 diabetes. And what did we learn from COVID? These are, and influenza, these are high-risk factors for serious illness. So once again, I think it's a critical service, it's not taking the place of primary care, it's just another way to access health, decompress the hospitals that are still completely full. And so we think this is a good utilization of taxpayer money, because it'll save money in the long run. So although the numbers are low, it's still there.
Okay, all right, and so to my colleagues, I didn't get a chance to get this update, you know, and this was very passionate, and so when I saw this, I had questions about it, but my questions have been answered, and so I appreciate that. The fact that you are still going to be able to send mobile units out to work on hypertension, influenza, and diabetes, if it would have been solely COVID, David, I would have said that the ship has sailed.
Totally agree, but I also want to reiterate, you've known us for a while, we're pretty, we're good, our staff looks at every invoice. This is not a blank check. They have to invoice us, and we look at the numbers, and we look at the work to make sure it's justified.
Fantastic, good to know. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion in a second? Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
We now move back to your regular agenda, item number seven, under Sheriff, Coroner, Public Administrator, retroactively approve and authorize the Sheriff, Coroner, Public Administrator's previous mittel of an online grant application to the U.S. Department of Justice, Office of Justice Programs, Bureau of Justice Assistance for the Body-Worn Camera Policy and Implementation Program to Support Law Enforcement Agencies, effective October 1st, 2022 to September 30th, 2025.
Good morning, Chairman Quintero, members of the board. John Zanoni, Fresno County Sheriff. And no, I will not repeat the title of this agenda item. I'm here this morning, last year, the Fresno County Sheriff's Office applied for the United States Department of Justice grant for a body-worn camera program. We estimated about 215 cameras. We were awarded that grant in the amount of $430,000, which is approximately $2,000 per camera. It is a three-year grant. Our request of you today is that you would approve the receipt of this grant retroactive back to October 1st of 2022. In addition, we'll be adding one ITA position in order to handle all of the information, the data, all of the programs and everything related to it. And then my goal is to not ask for the money directly today, but to have the money included in the 2324 budget moving forward for a period of five years. Our estimated total cost is $3.2 million. When you remove the $430,000 grant funding that we've received from that, it puts it down to about $2.8 million. Approximately 10% of these cameras will be utilized within the Fresno County jail, and we'll be utilizing inmate welfare funds for a portion of that. Approximately, a little over $500,000 per year will be the county cost that we will look for out of some different funds, including innovation funds and Prop 172. The belief is that body cameras will help improve our transparency and our trust with the community, it'll also help mitigate liability and reduce risk. And I think we all know, in today's environment here in Fresno County, that law enforcement is sometimes second-guessed, and sometimes it takes an actual video or some proof to show actually what happened, as we've seen with numerous civil judgments and other cases that we've had recently. They'll take the word of the plaintiffs over multiple law enforcement officers who are at the scene, so I believe that there is value to this. And in the future, it could potentially have a cost-reduction measure when we talk about the amount of money that we pay out in settlements and attorney's fees. I'm open to any questions that you have regarding this program.
Any questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do. Sheriff, my questions aren't necessarily for you, although I realize you're the head of the department, I'm willing to grant you that you're new, and a lot of the things that we're going to discuss were prior before you. I'd like to talk to your chief business officer, I believe, Tom, he's the one that handles the money, is that, is that accurate, or?
Yes, he is our administrative service.
My questions are for him, then.
Okay.
Thank you.
Morning Supervisor Tom Chester, Administrative Services Director.
Morning, Mr. Trustler. I have to say, in my eight years-plus on this board, I don't think I've ever turned down the request of the Sheriff's Department in my eight years of experience here. However, I have some heartache with this one, I must say. It was disappointing, two weeks ago at our last meeting, when we had a budget review, you were all here in the morning, and when it came time for the budget review, you had walked out and didn't get to hear the presentation that this board received. So I can only go on the information that I received at that time. But at that meeting, it was my understanding that out of all of our departments, at least 16 in total, there were only two departments that exceeded their budget, and it was your department as well as the public health. Public health that we just heard from was over budget by about $100,000, which they still have time to rectify that, but it was my understanding at that meeting that the Sheriff's Department was about $2 million plus in the negative. And then I went over with our CAO's office representative on the budget and asked, "What are the issues, what is going on with the Sheriff's Department?", because that is not new, you know? Historically, Sheriff's Department's always really tight or a little bit over. And it was my understanding, and again, you correct me if I'm wrong, I have no issue with that, it's my understanding, the two biggest categories that you were over budget is the fuel expense as well as overtime and things. Overtime, I can maybe grant a little bit more leeway, because we've had the fire, we're dealing with the floods now, and a lot of things are going on. The fuel expense, I have a little harder time with, because we all knew fuel was up. I would assume you know the amount of miles that you guys drive each and every year, and... and 12 other departments got a handle on that, two of which have a tremendous amount of cars, as do you, and they got it. How'd you guys miss this?
Well, sir, first of all, I apologize for missing the meeting two weeks ago. I had a different.
I wish you would have been able to hear that.
So in regards to the current shortfalls for the $2 million, it is fuel, which was last year budgeted at $1.6 million, was actually increased by 84% to over $3 million. And so we're running short about $133,000 on fuel. The other two accounts that are large accounts are the facility service and the utilities accounts, which are both internal service fund accounts. Last year, $8.8 million was budgeted. Roughly $1 million was spent. However, this year, $10.7 million was budgeted, and we're looking at an expenditure rate of about $13 million. So that's about $3 million short. And those are ISFs directly from the internal service departments. So we have to go with their numbers in regards to those budget plannings. However, we did identify it after the six-month period at the mid-year level, and I've been working with the county administrative office to mitigate some of those shortfalls.
Okay, I want to go on record right now. I firmly support the Sheriff's Department getting cameras. I think it's necessary. We all read in the paper just last week that the Sheriff's Department lost a huge lawsuit about involving the shooting of someone's dog. And the jury had to determine who was accurate, you know, the deputy or the family. And in today's environment, it's very hard for law enforcement to have any credibility with the environment. Through no fault of anyone, it's just, it is what it is. I believe if we would have had a camera, that would have helped us in that situation. I believe cameras are a way of the future. But again, as we just heard from our last item, as a farmer, I gotta live within my means and in my budget. And I agree with the sheriff. It will prevent and probably save us money going forward, but we have to pay the bill here and now, here and today. My colleague to my right has professed for many, many months that a recession is looming, we're gonna go back. When, before Supervisor Mendez and I first came to this board, the previous board had gone through that, and I am pleased to say that the sheriff deputies were the first ones, the first ones to come forward and say, we know you're in a hard spot, we're gonna freeze and take a cut to help the county as a whole get through this. And I have great, great respect for that. What I want to do is now, sitting here in the present, now, knowing what's coming, don't want to get in that position again, that I gotta ask for employees countywide to have a pay cut, or worse yet, to get laid off. And I realize it's gonna be a cost savings going forward, but you're already $2 million in the hole. I believe it's gonna go to $3 to $4 million, because we're only at the halfway point. And I cannot in good conscience support this, knowing that we're that far in the hole, because we gotta survive to here and now, and I don't want to lay any deputies off. We had in the newspaper today, Fresno City, got the street racers and all that. I got a call yesterday from a community member in Easton. There's street racing going on in Easton, they're upset. I need more deputies to get out onto the streets. I don't want to hurt the deputies in any way to reduce them that we vitally need out in the rural part of the county, because the people in the jail are gonna be wearing cameras. I don't. When we do it, I believe we need to go department-wide. Everybody needs to have it. It's a, policies are a lot easier that way. And maybe the jail is the way to start. I'm okay with that, but you need money to do it, and right now, I don't see you having that money. I agree, we got a grant, but the grant doesn't cover the cost, and we gotta come up with another. Today, we're told a half a million. Earlier, it was over $2 million, that we gotta come forward to do this, and how are we gonna do that?
Well, under the initial request, the funds were gonna be supplemented with innovation funds, along with inmate welfare trust funds. So right now, those are the plans in regards to using those two pots of funds to offset the cost, at least for the initial three years.
Well, again, I understand, I'm waiting to hear the comments from my colleagues. Even if we don't acknowledge this grant, this isn't the first time the grants come forward, there will be other grants. But I think we need to make our budget whole before we even go deeper into the hole personally. But that's my only opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the time.
Thank you, Sheriff. And generally speaking, I too support cameras moving forward, but I do have a couple of questions. And I think the way, the way the report came to us, it says that there's no additional net county cost associated with the action, which is to cover the grant, which is a three-year time period. But I heard you make reference to a five-year commitment, and help me understand, because yesterday I found out that you've got the three-year commitment with the grant, but then there's a five-year commitment for software that basically runs, you know, that comes with the cameras, with the hardware. So is the gap, the two years, where we're missing funds?
No, the gap will be, we'll need the funding each year. The grant is for three years, and that's for the purchase of new body-worn cameras. Obviously, at the end of the third year, if we still have the cameras, we can look at other grants that are out there to potentially help out with funding with an existing body-worn camera program. You know, as far as the money goes, our goal is really, I understand what you're saying, Supervisor Pacheco, but I'm not asking for the money today. We are gonna rectify this year's budget, I'm asking for the money in the 2324 budget moving forward. With that said, we're looking at approximately $2.5 million, once we count about 10% coming out of inmate welfare fund for those cameras, because we're on the hook for $215, because that's what we applied for on the grant. Those will be deployed in the jail, approximately 20 cameras, which is about 10% of the program. When we're looking at these lawsuits, we're looking at our most recent lawsuit, we're looking at a total right now, if it's, as it stands, we're on the hook for $2.3 million. Million dollars in plaintiff's attorney fees, $500,000 in our attorney's fees, and an $800,000 settlement. I have another lawsuit right here that we have a deposition on regarding an officer-involved shooting. The potential for this to mitigate costs moving forward is real. And you talk to, not just for civil cases, not just reliability, you could talk to people from the DA's office. Juries look for this to prosecute criminal cases. The days of, and I understand the cost, but I'm asking this to be put into the next year's budget. We can hold off for a few months, budget it for '23 and '24, because I understand, Supervisor Pacheco, we have some issues with this year's budget. But this is something that we need to look at. You know, I've been in meeting after meeting, former risk manager Steve Johnson was here, and what did we always talk about? The recommendations, the consultants. We paid hundreds of thousands of dollars to find out what we can do to reduce risk and mitigate liability and protect our employees. I mean, I've been to those meetings at nauseam, and you think about that, this is something right here for about a half a million dollars a year would really protect the county of Fresno, the Sheriff's Office, and our employees. Under Senate Bill 2 regarding the decertification of law enforcement officers, you have to realize now, a verdict in a civil case is potentially disclosable to them, which could have a negative impact on members of Unit 1, members of Unit 14, anyone here who is a peace officer. So we have to protect our employees. You know, we're not like Fresno PD. When there's an officer-involved shooting at Herndon and Ingram, they got tons of video footage to make a determination on whether they're gonna call out California Department of Justice under AB 1506. Sometimes ours happen out in the middle of nowhere, rural areas. Our body-worn camera footage could make the difference between a case getting filed, it could save us in a civil lawsuit. I mean, there are a lot of advantages to it, and we're talking approximately $2.5 to $2.8 million over five years. And if we budget that out and, you know, amortize it and divide it by five, I think it's a negligible cost that will not only build the transparency with the community, but will help protect our deputies and help protect the county and the Sheriff's Office from future litigation, will help in criminal prosecution. And as I've talked to a lot of my counterparts, it'll help protect citizen complaints. It helps negate citizen complaints. It helps, sometimes people just withdraw the complaint once they know that we have the camera footage. And if you look here, like I said, I understand the money, but Madera County has them, Clovis has them, Fresno PD has them. For a large agency, I think it's time that we make it a priority next year, budget it, and get in the game.
Sheriff, I would, sorry, are you done? No, I have some more questions, so let me finish. But, so a couple of the things, again, I'm trying to get back to what the full cost is. So you mentioned a five-year commitment, about half a million dollars a year, but in our staff report, it talks about the $430,000 grant that we have. It also talks about the local innovation funds from Org 3438, which I believe are Prop 172 funds, which have to be set aside specifically for innovation, right, Tom? That we have right now, this is money that we have right now, roughly $2.3 million. So what I'm trying to get a handle on is, what is the true cost all in over five years? What I'm hearing you saying, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, is that the additional ask is gonna be for $2.5 million out of the general fund for five years. But I want to make clear, so does that mean to run this program, it's gonna be closer to $5.5 million when you take into consideration Org 3438 plus the grant? Because the equipment, it's my understanding, only lasts for about 60 months. So at the end of five years, we've gotta buy new equipment. We have to enter into a new software agreement, and what could the costs look like after year five? So what, all I'm trying to do is get my hands around what the true cost of implementing this program is gonna be over five years.
No, I think this is. So what I'm looking at here is estimated cost for the five years is $3.2 million. Then we have the $430,000 of our U.S. Department of Justice grant funding, which brings that total down to approximately $2.8 million, $2.859,000. And then we're looking at 10% of it, we've already confirmed, can be funded through the inmate welfare fund, which will be approximately, give or take, $280,000. So that puts us at about $2.5 to $2.6 million that will need to be budgeted over five years.
So, let's stop right there real quick. So if you, if you take into consideration the local innovation funds, which we have, right now, we've got $1.8 million available. So really, all that you're asking for is $700,000 over the next five years, is that correct?
Yes.
So to me, that is much easier to take a bite out of than, for me, hearing half a million dollars a year, each year, for five years, when in reality, that number also takes into consideration money that we already have set aside, that can only be used for innovation anyway, so.
That's correct.
My whole goal is to make sure that we don't lose deputies. I don't want to be in a position where, as revenues begin to drop off, which it's inevitable, everything is cyclical, I don't want to be in a position where we have to let deputies go at the expense of a new program that we've added. But based upon this new information, that all that we're really looking for is roughly $700,000 out of the general fund commitment over five years, based upon what we just went over, this is something I can be supportive, because this is a lot less than what I was being led to believe even yesterday.
And I believe that is contingent upon the inmate welfare funds being still in a position, you know, unless there's some change to that from the state legislature or somewhere else, as long as the process of obtaining inmate welfare funds stays as it is now, we'll be able to use some of that money for about 10% of the project.
Just a comment, if I may, and Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, just, I want to make sure that some of the statements were made were clear on. So Sheriff and I have had some conversations, and I just want to clarify some of the numbers, because in the agenda item today, if we go off the original cost, it was originally $3.9 million over five years, but the sheriff and I had a meeting this last week, and I appreciate attempts to look at reducing those costs, and Tom was part of that. And so the costs were reduced over five years to $3.2 million. So just, I want to clarify that. When it comes to the funding source, you mentioned Prop 172, but the innovation funds are not Prop 172. So the innovation funds are AB 109. And so those AB 109 funds, the last couple of years, we've seen significant growth. And so we have a pretty good balance in that innovation fund right now. But that's almost like one-time money for the, so it'll, for the next three years, that might be good, but the next, what we're seeing for next year already is that growth is gonna stop. Prop 172 is another portion of that. As you know, we've been doing well recently with Prop 172, but that is based on sales tax revenue, which we've still been doing okay, but the growth has been decreasing over time. So the current cost of $3.2 million is, those innovation funds are likely, probably it'll last through this contract with the amount that's there. But that's likely gonna, where that goes in the future is a question I can't answer today.
Is there $1.8 million in the innovation fund right now? Because according to our staff report, there is, because it's written as no net county cost, and there's actually a breakdown for three years, and it says that there's roughly $1.8 million in there. So is that money there? Because again, it's written as no net county cost, so that's how I'm reading the staff report.
Yes, so when you talk about that, that money is there to use, and this is an appropriate use of that fund, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, again, for me, I would just add, I completely agree with you, Sheriff, that the cameras would be a great beneficial use, especially out in the rural parts of the county. It's my understanding this program's gonna primarily focus on the jail, and I don't know of any program, any program, and maybe you can help me with that, Supervisor Magzig, I don't know of any program that started and is less money than when we started. They always grow. They always grow. And we're coming into unprecedented times, we're $2 million in the hole, and I don't see that changing any time soon. But again, I will respect the rule of three, but I think we need to be a little bit more cautious on this. Supervisor Mendez, yeah.
Okay, I got a suggestion. I know I can see you're ready, the only thing I can really do is read for other minds. That's the only thing I'm really good at. And I can see that there's a little hesitation, and, because I'm for having cameras, I think the whole board is. But we have an item coming up on this deal, 7.3, and that'll bring Greg Rique back. And what I'm suggesting is why don't Greg and Tom get together and lay this back out to the board, and we rehear this in, you think, a month, or you think, two weeks?
You know, we'll meet whatever priority, but I would like Greg.
It's a high priority.
Yep, this is one of those meetings where I wish Greg was here to speak, but we do have a meeting, I think already calendared, with pending your approval of the upcoming item, I should say, that we would be meeting with the sheriff to kind of go through the budgets. We've already started that, I want to thank the sheriff for, you know, we've already begun that process, but we have a meeting already scheduled in that regard. So, to be safe, I'd always say, you know, a month is good, but I don't know if that impacts.
Well, if you can get it back in next meeting, fine, if it's gonna be two meetings, I mean, that's fine, too, you know?
So the next two meetings is April 25th, May 9th?
But I want the bread to be baked, not semi-raw, when you bring it back to us.
I would be okay with that, Supervisor Mendez, I just think we need to get a handle on the numbers before going forward, because this is not gonna be revenue-neutral, Supervisor Magzig, I do not believe it will. And maybe, but we'll see. Only time will tell.
One point of clarification, the majority of these cameras are gonna be deployed to our patrol staff, not to the jail. About 10%, about 20% will be in the jail. Once we move to the new West Annex jail, we should have enough video surveillance and different cameras in our three, those three current jail facilities, once we're out of the South Annex, where I don't think this would be a cost-effective measure to have it in the jail, because you have, you already have that in place. This is for our staff out on patrol, this is, like I said, to help mitigate liability. I understand, you know, the perspective of.
And we understand.
What the cost is, but I think that there's a cost-saving measure here that we have to look at the potential cost-saving moving forward by looking at our previous incidents that have occurred.
I just think if Tom and Greg can get together and they could bring a big product back to us, we know exactly what the costs are going down the road. But I totally understand what you're saying.
And the other.
Cameras are gonna be out on the.
And the other thing, too, is today, we're, you know, we're not the specific dollar amount, we're just asking to accept the grant. And in order, you know, we will work with the CAO's office, just like you said, if it's approved, that we'll have a body-worn camera program, and then we'll work with them as far as the budget moving forward, and how we're gonna implement it, and where that money's gonna come from.
You better make that into a motion.
I've got a question. Sheriff, how many counties in California of similar size do not have cameras?
I don't have that answer. I do have the answer locally here, who has them. And that would be Madera, City of Fresno, and the City of Clovis.
They're pretty good size.
Well, there are surrounding areas here. It's, I'm looking here, you know, like when we do salary comparisons and we look at what our neighbors are getting as far as pay and benefits and things like that, I try to focus on what's going on here, because this is what impacts us locally here in our region. And then I think that when you look at the industry standard, as Clovis PD has said, and Fresno PD, and in my talks with Chief Baldorama, just the amount of positives and the way that they're able to handle situations, and really. the way that they're able to handle situations, and, and really, you know, build that transparency and, and really help them with their investigations, you know, they've had them for a lot of years over there. So I think that's what I'm focusing on, is us here locally. I'm not really, I, I know there's places in the Bay Area that have them, and Southern California, but I, I try to focus on what we're doing right here.
I remember when I served on the city council, that we had the discussion on whether to get cameras or not, and the, we went ahead and, and moved forward with approving them. And we, there was a great amount of cost savings whenever lawsuits were filed, because we had cameras, our officers had cameras, and so there was a big, big amount of savings there, so.
Well, and that's, and that's a number, Chairman Quintero, that I can't quantify here today. I know Jim Weekly's here in the, somewhere, and discussing our current case, and, you know, he's a big proponent of that, if we had the body cameras, that it would have had a significant impact on how that case was handled, and even the outcome of the case. So I mean, I can't say what that's going to be moving forward. I, I could just look at some of our past history, and if, if we had them there, you know, it's hindsight's 2020. But, so I can't quantify the number, but I, I'm sure that there is going to be some cost savings.
Well, I know you can't quantify it, but I'm telling you, we had cost savings...
Okay.
At the cameras. So, thank you. So Board, what is...
Supervisor, can I?
Oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, and, and also, you know, I reminded of my time over at City Hall, when FPOA was going through this process, it was so interesting that a good chunk of the officers didn't want the cameras, because, you know, they felt like that was going to be used against them. But in reality, it seems like the way cameras have played out, they end up exonerating law enforcement more often than not, and really become a helpful tool. So that's what I've seen in the 11 years that I've been in the game. So it's been very interesting.
And that's, that's accurate. We deal with a lot of internal affairs cases, and, you know, our deputies work by themselves, they work a whole area that they patrol by themselves. So a lot of times, it's their word against that of, of a citizen or a resident, so it can be helpful.
Yeah. And so I, I, so I think, I, I want to vote for cameras. I want our, our deputies to have cameras. That's what I want, our deputies to have cameras. On top of that, what I want is a pathway for it to be paid for, which is really what my colleagues have been talking about. And, you know, you just saw that last tiny item I pulled off of consent calendar, and that's not even Fresno County money, but it's still taxpayer money. So it's, you know, for me, I got to get it right. And, and so if it's a program that needs to be paid for, and Supervisor Magzig, thank you for bringing up that innovation fund, because I hadn't heard of that as part of the answer. I hadn't heard it from the sheriff's department or, or the CAO as part of the answer. Maybe that's a great answer. But, so Paul, Supervisor Mendez has talked about more time. What is your recommendation as CAO?
Well, and as the sheriff knows, I would prefer that. It gives, we have a meeting, I was just reminded that our, we have a meeting on the 25th of April, but we may move that up to speak to that. But I would like to be able to do that. You know, the sheriff's budget, just, you know, put it in perspective, it's about 304 million dollars, you know, and when it comes to NCC, it's about 35% of all net county cost goes to the sheriff's office. That's not the only part of the budget. There's Prop 172, there's AB 109. But some of these funding sources that we're talking about are not going to be there in four years. So I just, I want to make clear that that may sound great for three years, but they're not going to be there in year four, or it's unlikely that they may be at the same level. I don't know that for a fact. So the most conservative path is that we work together. Already, just in the meeting that we had, I think we had a very productive meeting, and already were able to come up with some cost savings. So I think that would be fruitful. That would be my recommendation.
Well, there might also be grants available through Department of Justice and Department of Agriculture.
There, there could be, but, you know, when your board makes a commitment, it's based on the cost and, and not the unknown of those grants. But if we know of them, absolutely.
Yeah. So Sheriff, I am committed to getting you your cameras, but you've got to commit to me and my colleagues about giving us a plan on how to pay for the whole thing. And I think, I don't think it's going to be that far away, but there needs to be conversations. This thing was originally going to be on our agenda at our last board meeting, as you all know, and it got pulled at the last minute. And I'm not sure if the required conversations since that time, two weeks ago, have actually been held by today. So I need the sheriff's department with Greg or the CAO's office need to come together and literally lay out, Supervisor Brandow, here's the number of cameras we're getting, here's the grant, here's how we're going to pay for the remainder. And it's all airtight, and it's not a cutting of other valuable services, so you're not robbing from Peter to pay Paul? Then you've 100% got my support for cameras at that time. So I would be supporting of another...
All right. I just want to make sure we get a, we decide this is a 5-0 deal, and we're all 100% behind it. So with that, I'll make a motion that we bring it back on or before the May 9th meeting. And in the meantime, Tom and Greg can kind of work out all the details, so at the end, that the whole board is 100% behind it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second?
Mr. Chairman, this would be a good time to go out to the public. This would be a good time to go out.
Any comments from the public?
I have a comment. Always have a comment. Oh, darn it, I lost it.
Sorry, Gloria.
It's okay, Gloria Hernandez, Fresno Stolen Lives. On May, on March 14, 2022, there was a quote-unquote "hanging" in the jail. I referred that family to a lawyer. He just spoke about a deposition coming up next week, and we all know Justice First Scoopy cost us how much? Hold on. And in addition, they have to pay the attorney fees. And it's likely going to be over a million dollars, because it took five years to get to court. That was Scooby the dog. And so you're delaying it one more time, and heaven knows what happens between now and however more time you delay it. I'm supporting the sheriff. You need to get those body cameras, both for the sake of the, of the officers, but also for the sake of the families I represent. Thank you.
Good morning. Lisa Smith Camp, Fresno County District Attorney. I'm here for another matter, but I feel it's important for me just to add a couple of things. I think the board all has a good handle on the importance of the cameras. I think everybody can agree that these are, this is part of technology, this is part of the way that law enforcement has to operate now. So there's a couple of things I want to add. Number one is that body cams equal truth. And there really isn't anything more important in criminal justice or law enforcement than truth. And the other issue that I would like to address is something that Supervisor Pacheco mentioned, is that, well, it would be, in a perfect world, it would be great to have the entire sheriff's department initiate body worn cameras all at the same time. When we went through this with Chief Dyer at the time, and Fresno PD, it, there is, when you are talking about the criminal cases that come to the district attorney's office, there's an issue, too, because body worn cameras create more discovery. Now, the Fresno Police Department accounts for about 50% of the cases that come to the DA's office, and the sheriff's department is about 10. So the volume for us won't be as big of an issue, but it is possible, and, and very probably not bad policy, to roll the cameras out slowly. And that's what we ended up doing at Fresno PD. And that has to be an internal decision that's made, but that may help with the fiscal challenges that you might be suffering. It's not the worst thing in the world if you do implement the camera slowly. They are a big change for the deputies. They are, there's, you know, new software to learn, new procedures to learn, new procedures to implement. And I worked very, very long and very hard with FPOA and the administration at the police department when we first rolled out body cams at the Fresno Police Department. We'd be happy to do that again with the sheriff's department. No real need to reinvent the wheel. But if that helps fiscally, I just wanted to offer that, that that is, that is not an impossibility to do, to roll them out in, in, in small sections at the beginning of time. So thank you.
I wasn't planning on speaking on this item, but I do support the wearing of body cameras by our deputies for a number of reasons, not, not for the same reasons that many of you support them, but I do think that we need body cameras on all our, on all our deputies, because we have seen across this country recently the rise in gun violence, which is not going anywhere, especially when we have our wonderful sheriff attending rallies with far-right organizations called Sunday Gun Day, where he wants to go out and promote, promote more gun culture, put more guns on the street, standing with these far-right, far-right fascists that are bringing hate into our communities. So I would love for you guys to put body cameras on our sheriffs. One, for the fiscal impacts, and two, so we can see all their inadequacies every time we have an incident because of gun violence that our sheriff is promoting on Sunday Gun Day. Thank you.
Thank you, board members. Yes. Let's get those body cameras out. The sheriff supports it, we support it. There shouldn't be a delay. I mean, Fresno County is behind the times when it comes to ensuring that body cam, cams are available. So the officer is both, it goes both ways. It protects the officers from charges, and it also protects civilians if an officer does something that is inappropriate. So we need those, and I hope you don't wait. Let's get them out there. Let's roll them out. It's important. I just want to bring up, related to cameras, I'm currently investigating a situation in Fresno County Jail where a woman's son, she's very distraught, because, she's very angry also, because the camera on the floor in the jail was covered up. This mentally, this mentally, he had disabilities, he, he wound up, he had some mental disabilities, so it wound up on the wrong floor. He wound up on the floor with violent offenders that beat him to death in the shower. They were able to cover up the camera. How is that possible in the jail that inmates can cover up a camera and beat someone to death? As I look more into this, you'll probably be hearing from me about this, because it happened in Fresno County Jail. Again, cameras are important. The cameras in the jail need to be revised also if, if certain group of, if a group of violent inmates beat somebody to death and are able to cover, cover up the camera while that happens. How is that possible? Please, look into it. I can give you the details. Thank you.
Any more comments from the public? Thank you. Seeing none, we have a motion on the floor by... Oh. Yeah, I got a motion. Okay, we're done. We have a motion on the floor by Supervisor Mendez, seconded by Supervisor Magzig. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We now move to item number 7.1 under the Sheriff Department. Adopt resolution to fill a sheriff's account clerk position with extra help retiree Violeta Nicholas, part-time effective April 17, 2023, finding pursuant to government code section 7522.56F1, that 180-day separation period for retired employees returning to employment as extra help is not applicable based on your board certification that the nature of employment and appointment is necessary to fill a critically needed position before the 180-day separation period.
Good morning, Board. Tom Traster, Sheriff's Administrative Services Director. Just a little background on the, this item, is that we currently have roughly 15 account clerks assigned to our business office, and we have four vacancies, along with one out on FMLA, and we have two in background. So the need for this waiver, for the approval of this waiver is critical due to the fact that this individual we're bringing back works in our payroll department, which is responsible for almost 1,300 time sheets. Thank you. And I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
Nope.
No questions? Okay, entertaining motion?
Nope.
Darn it. Public comment? No comment from the public? Okay, bring it back to the board.
I'll move for staff's recommendation.
Second. Okay, we have motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now move to item 7.2 under the District Attorney's Office. Adopt resolution to fill a district attorney business manager position with extra help retiree Stephen Rusconi, part-time effective April 17, 2023, finding pursuant to government code section 7522.56F1, that 180-day separation period for retired employees returning employment as extra help is not applicable based on your board certification that the nature of employment and appointment is necessary to fill a critically needed position before the 180-day separation period.
Good morning, Board again. I'm here today to request that Stephen Rusconi be permitted to assume the DA business manager position as an extra help retiree, part-time effective April 17, 2023. I'm asking the 180-day separation period for retirees be deemed inapplicable by this board as the nature of the employment and appointment is necessary to fill a critical need position before the 180-day separation period. Mr. Rusconi has over 31 years of experience in various financial positions, including managing several trust accounts for asset forfeiture and our gang unit magic, in addition to his responsibilities of running the DA budget. He is needed at this time to oversee the upcoming 2023, 2024 budget, and his experience in the financial operations of the district attorney's office is critical in the immediate future, immediate future. There is no fiscal impact to the county or the department as a result of this appointment, and he will not work more than the 960 hours prescribed by law. Also, I am here to request that Elizabeth Jacobson be permitted to assume the program tech two position in an extra, as an extra help retiree, part-time, also effective April 17. I am asking that this 180-day separation period also be denied, be deemed inapplicable by this board as the nature of her employment and appointment is necessary to also fill a critical need and the, before the 180-day separation period. Mrs. Jacobson has over 22 years of experience in the DA business office, and has worked side-by-side with Mr. Rusconi. Mrs. Jacobson has been the person to oversee the CALRAP, which is our Witness Relocation Assistance Program operation in the district attorney's office, which is a critical part of some of the most serious cases we prosecute. The need for her expertise in the immediate future is, is paramount, and she will be very difficult to replace. Interviewing and locating a qualified candidate for this position will be extremely difficult. There is no fiscal impact to the county or our department as a result of either one of these appointments. And Mrs. Jacobson, like Mr. Rusconi, will not work more than the 960 hours prescribed by law. I thank you for the opportunity to hear this request, and I will be happy to answer any questions.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Is Mr. Rusconi and Ms. Jacobson in the audience?
No, they are not, that I am aware of.
But they accept it?
I believe that they would, Your Hon, Your Honor. I feel like I'm in court.
How about your honesty?
I can call you Your Honor. Yes, I believe that they will accept the decision.
Okay. Is there any comments from the public? Seeing none, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
We now move to 7.3 under the Ministry of Office. Adopt resolution to fill an assistant county ministry officer position with extra help retiree Greg Rinkay, part-time effective April 12, 2023, finding the pursuant to government code section 7522.56F1, that 180-day separation period for retired employees returning to employment as extra help is not applicable based on your board certification that the nature of employment and, and appointment is necessary to fill a critically need position before the 180-day separation period.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Paul Nerland, your CAO. I won't restate the, the reasons, it's been stated already. This will bring Greg Rinkay back. It will waive the 180-day separation period, and he will be able to attend a meeting we talked about earlier. So I appreciate your support of that, and he will work within the 960 hours as required by law.
Motion to approve.
Second comments from the public? Seeing none, seeing no comments from the board, we have a motion. Is there a second? Yes, second. Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We now move to item eight under the Internal Services. Adopt resolution declaring county-owned property located in the northeast corner of Kings Canyon Road and South Cedar Avenue, Fresno, California, approximately 30 acres, commonly known as the former University Medical Center surplus land, and adopt resolution declaring county's intention to sell the surplus property at a minimum price of 6 million.
My name's Chris Jones. I'm Principal Staff Analyst with Internal Services.
Need to talk into the mic so the people can hear.
Sorry about that. Still new at this. Chairman Quintero, members of the Board. Item number eight before you this morning is to adopt a resolution declaring county-owned property located at the northeast corner of East Kings Canyon Road and South Cedar Avenue as surplus. This property consists of approximately 30 acres and is commonly known as the University Medical Center. Approval of the first recommended action will declare the property as surplus, set a minimum sale price of $6 million and initiate the sale process in accordance with government code section 54220. The property will be offered to qualified public agencies. If no qualified public agencies have responded within 60 days of the notice, the second recommended action will set the parameters for the sale of the property through a public bidding process according to government code section 25526. Your board may set an alternative amount as a minimum sale price. Should the property receive no bids by public agencies or private parties at the minimum sale price, the Internal Services Department will return to your board with a new declaration of surplus for further instruction.
Good morning, Board. Robert Bash, Director of Internal Services, Chief Information Officer again. You know, the price that we have set in the, in the agenda item here is based upon our previous efforts to move the property with other governmental entities. You know, we want to be, make sure that that's something that the board is so comfortable with. You can set a different minimum bid price. You know, one thing that we wanted to point out, of course, is that if we do not get the minimum bid, we will not be able to accept something below anything that we set today. So we can always reject a bid even if it is above our minimum bid, you know, later on if we so desire. But if we set it at $6 million and somebody offers us five, we will not be able to accept that. And council can correct me if I'm wrong on that. But I did want to point that out to the, to the board today.
Any comments from the board? I've got a question, couple of questions. On the, I guess it was a learning process the last time around and some of the folks that were interested in buying it raised some concerns. Is there anything that we're going to do different? Like, I think there was some concerns about EIRs and that type of thing on the property. Is there, is there anything that we're going to do different on our part to try and get it sold?
Yeah, and I'm not sure, you know, so the, the last time we were going through a negotiation process, of course, was with another governmental entity and I believe it was because they had already expressed their intentions of the, with the property that the question about EIRs being required, you know, were triggered at that time. Again, council might be better, you know, suited to answer that question, but I do not, you know, it kind of depends on what kind of process we end up in, you know, through this, whether it's with yet another qualifying government entity or, you know, private sector.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, any comments from the public?
Thank you, gentlemen. As you know, I am also a homeless advocate and at one point, I know that community, regional medical center building was thought of as a alternative to being on the streets, build some low-income housing with services, housing-first approach, permanent supportive housing, and I know that fell apart because there was some corruption going on. So I guess if you are willing to sell this to a public agency, then it could be turned into low-income housing. Is that correct? Well, I just wondered because they made the presentation. As if the city, I'm just asking, if the city of Fresno bought this property, is it, is it in enough good condition? Is it in a good condition, the building itself, that it could be converted into housing? We have no idea from the presentation today how much it would take, how much money it would take to rehab that building or, you know, is it going to get knocked down? These are real questions that need to be answered to the public because, you know, $6 million is a good price for that property. It's excellent. But if that building could be saved, it's, it's a resource that we need, of course, when we have, you know, shortage of 35,000 housing units in the county. So I appreciate if, if you get some answers on that. Thank you.
That discussion would probably take place if there's an interested buyer even from the public sector with our, our real estate folks. Yes. We have a motion. Is there a second? Okay, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes.
We now move to item number nine. Board Supervisor Committee Reports and Comments.
Okay, any committee reports or board comments from the board? None? Okay, seeing, seeing none?
Aye. Item number 10, Board Appointments.
Any appointments? Or any comments? Steve?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I've got to reappoint Jennifer Estrada to the Fresno Mosquito Vector Control District.
Any comments from the public? Oh, I'm sorry, Supervisor Magzig?
No problem. So to the Clovis Cemetery District, reappoint Dwight Kroll, James Leninback and Kenneth Long.
No other committee reports or board appointments? Seeing none? Any comments from the public?
What was the name? Kenneth what?
Kroll?
Long or Long? No, no, L. Long.
Okay. We have a motion in a second to approve of the appointments?
Yeah.
Yes.
Second.
Okay, we have motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item 11, Clerk?
Item number 11, Public Presentations. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons desiring to address the board on any matter not on this agenda.
Please approach the podium if you have any comments.
Hello, my name is June Taylor and I am a resident of Yokahz Valley. Native women have clearly communicated that the S-word is deeply hurtful. The movement to change the name in almost 650 places across the country, including my home state of Maine, did not come from some hazy liberal void. It came from a real place. It came because native women have had the courage to speak out about the genuine racial trauma they have experienced because of this word. It is an extraordinary waste of taxpayer dollars and it is a disservice to our town to take out an ill-considered lawsuit against a decision made by the federal government and passed unanimously by both Republicans and Democrats in the state legislature. There are many really good people in Yokahz Valley. Lovely, lovely people. And you are pitting us against each other by this lawsuit. This is not the work of good leadership. And yes, I did say pitting each other against. I wrote it down. I agree with you, Chairman Magzig or Vice Chairman Magzig, that it is wrong to pit people against each other. So please stop.
Hello, my name is Ashley Crisalrojas. I am a Director with Indigenous Justice. I'm also a fifth-gen Fresnoan and a survivor of sexual and gender-based violence. We strongly urge the Fresno County Board of Supervisors to drop the suit in opposition to Yokahz Valley. California has the fifth-highest number of missing and murdered indigenous women, girls, two-spirit people and relatives. Four out of five indigenous women report having experienced violence and more than one in two have experienced sexual violence. The S-word is dehumanizing, perpetuates and endorses violence against women and communicates that indigenous women's lives are not worth protecting. During a time of declared flooding crisis and a looming recession, the allocation of public funds to uphold a racist and misogynistic and sexually violent slur is performative and frivolous and fiscally irresponsible. Rich with contradictions, you've expressed so much care for taxpayers and our money. Use the funds to support local residents and businesses in becoming Yokahz Valley. Our humanity is not in question. Yours is. God and Creator knows all. Do the right thing.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Linda Tubach and I'm a resident of Yokahz Valley and I'm here once again to urge you to reconsider this ill-advised lawsuit that I believe is completely unwitable. This, the order to rename our community came from the federal government and you're rejecting the will of the people of California in that our legislature unanimously passed the law to rename our community. So I don't get it. What is your problem with renaming our community? This does not erase anybody's history. It's expanding our perspective on our history. It's the same thing as with the renaming of Cesar Chavez Boulevard. Nobody is being erased. Nobody, to uplift a group does not diminish other groups. That history is not a zero-sum game. I'm a history teacher. The whole concept of erasing history is ludicrous, okay? We're talking about expanding our view of history. We're talking about seeing our history from multiple perspectives and it's long overdue to rename our community Yokahz Valley, just like it's long overdue to rename Cesar Chavez Boulevard. Kings Canyon is Cesar Chavez Boulevard. Thank you.
My name is Jenny Barnes and I live in District Three and I support the name Yokahz Valley. And I thank Chairman and my Supervisor Quintero and Supervisor Pacheco for voting against this misuse of public funds and waste of taxpayers' dollars for this frivolous lawsuit. The S-Valley renamed campaign was a two-year process to provide ample time for public input and if anyone is responsible for not adequately informing the public of that potential name change, it's a supervisor for that, for that district. Nevertheless, AB 2022 was unanimously passed last September and this change is happening. So to double down on this dead-end lawsuit in order to promote racist misogynist slur is wrong and especially when we could use those funds to better support the basic needs of those unhoused folks that live in our community. So I ask the Board of Supervisors to not impede this positive change for our community and stand behind Yokahz Valley. Thank you.
Hi, Josef Alvega. Last September, the California Legislature unanimously approved AB 2022, which requires removal of the racist and misogynist slur, the S-word, from place names and geographic features across the state. On January 12th, following a process that included extensive public comment from Yokahz Valley residents, the U.S. Board of Geographic Names renamed the unincorporated community Yokahz Valley. The word Yokahz means the people in the monolinguage and as such, the name of this community now translates to People's Valley. On or around February 7th, the county work crew removed an unofficial sign reading "Welcome to S-Valley" that had stood in front of Bear Mountain Library. In a video posted on Facebook that same day, Supervisor Nathan Magzig said he would ensure that the sign would be replaced. On or around February 9th, the sign was reinstalled in a more prominent position in front of the library. AB 2022 mandates that. A public agency shall no longer replace any sign, interpretive marker or any other marker or printed material with a discontinued name containing the S-word. Because the name S-Valley had been discontinued by the order of the U.S. Board of Geographic Names, the replacement of the offending sign by the board or at the insistence of one or more of its members unquestionably violated state law. The unlawful replacement of the sign is a repudiation of the work that has been done to rectify the harms committed against Native Americans in California. In passing, AB 2022, state lawmakers found that the S-word is a racist and derogatory term that has historically been used as an offensive ethnic, racial and sexist slur, particularly targeting indigenous women and two-spirit individuals. In enacting AB 2022, California acknowledged and addressed the harm caused by the legacy of colonization and racial discrimination against Native Americans. By violating AB 2022 and threatening legal action, the supervisors regrettably demonstrated their desire to undermine the state's efforts to right past wrongs. Furthermore, by promoting the continued use of the S-word, the supervisors continue to harm their constituents, particularly women who are members of the local native and indigenous communities. I urge Fresno Board of Supervisors to immediately remove the "Welcome to S-Valley" sign that was illegally replaced in front of the Bear Mountain Library and to publicly reverse the March 14th resolution to initiate legal action against the state and to fulfill their legal obligations under AB 2022. The pending lawsuit is, like many mentioned, is a waste of our tax money that could be better spent to protect the lives and livelihoods of our most vulnerable individuals.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. I'm Jim Grant. I live at 4098 West Harvard Avenue here in Fresno and I thank you for this opportunity to address the Yokahz Valley. I'd like to just quote the concluding paragraphs from what Mark Rosorski wrote on March 20th, which I think is a, a good way to let you remember what it is that you're trying to do and why it's so misguided. Yes, residents of Yokahz Valley, that's the name, get used to it, should have been allowed more input. I'd prefer the government not swoop in and make unilateral decisions about local communities. However, I have yet to hear anyone, politician or resident, make a case why the name Squaw Valley is so meaningful to them. Why are they so attached to it? What would be lost if the town of 3,511 residents was called something else? If someone can answer those questions, I'm all ears. But instead, all I've heard is anger and transference. Rather than acknowledge past bigotry against Native Americans, they play the white grievance card that's become all too familiar during the ongoing Republican-fueled culture war. It's been ignorant and childish. And now, the GOP majority on the Board of Supervisors, those staunch fiscal conservatives, want to flush our tax dollars in their battle against wokeness. Here's a proposal. Why not use that money to begin striking racist clauses from the county's property tax records? I wonder what Fibber Kirayama would have thought about that idea? That far, Mark. I can only add that you've got a chance now to understand the way the community feels, not just 3,500 people that live in S-Valley, in Yokahz Valley, the new name, but rather all of us who live in this county. Help us all feel proud about the Board of Supervisors not taking on the state, not taking on the federal government, but representing the best of what is our county, which includes the new community name Yokahz Valley. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Noah Cooper. I am an artist. I have lived in the Central Valley. I've called it my home for 24 years. This is my first time being at a Board of Supervisors meeting and I just want to express my deep embarrassment that this is how we are being represented in the Central Valley. It is embarrassing to see this frivolous waste of taxpayer dollars that could be better invested among your budget, you know? You said that the budget is horrible, so then why are you going against a state like this? Furthermore, it seems like this is just to uphold racist, misogynistic, repressive, regressive, white supremacist ideals. This is a definitive example of a reactionary decision and I am ashamed of our representatives. I encourage you to act in accordance with the people of Yokahz Valley and to honor the lives of indigenous women. Thank you. Thank you.
Rather than just reiterate what everyone else has said, there was a call for you to give a reason for why this name shouldn’t change. Can any of you three that dissented, or sorry, that voted to sue the state, can you give us a reason? Or is it just more political grandstanding? Can any, you know, we’re all here. Give us a reason why it should stay as S-Valley, if you have one.
It’s time, this time of-
I understand. It’s according to the Brown Act, I’m allowed to make my comments as I see fit. Thank you very much.
You’re welcome.
Hi, again, at the risk of looking like a gadfly at the board, I am up here again. But this is the main reason I came here, and I have to tell you, all the other things we spoke about today are very important to everybody in our community. That is, a community that is looking for changing things. Because what we have up there, I’m a resident of Yokets Valley for the last 10 years. It’s always been an embarrassment for me to say I was from S-Valley. When I would go down to Los Angeles, hang out with friends, I wouldn’t even mention where I was from because frankly, it’s embarrassing. And we have a lot of tourists that come through here, from all over the world. They come here from Europe, they come here from all over. They come here from the Middle East, Africa, South America, and, you know, it would be much more fitting to have Yokets Valley than use the S-word naming that place. It’s, let’s face it, it’s a token gesture. How many Yokets people are actually still living today? Let’s not deny our history, and I get tired of people saying this is some kind of woke thing. Well, I tell you, I was woke back in 1968. We were out there defending the Patriots with American Indian Movement, standing up for their treaty rights. And I’ve been in support of Indigenous rights for many years. It’s not about woke. And I want to ask everybody that uses that term, what’s the opposite of woke? Are you asleep? Are you walking around asleep? Are you a zombie? Are you the walking dead? Come on, folks. Let’s talk, let’s stop talking about erasing culture. The word Yokets erases no culture. All it does, it does a great thing by honoring the people that used to live in the area. So, let’s stop using, misleading people about the ability to get this done, because I think your lawsuit is going to fail, because state and federal law supersede local law on this, in this situation. Sure, going into this case could potentially cost a lot of money, even up to millions of dollars, to do what? It’s not possible to get the S-word back. I mean, even Mr. Magzig is not saying that anymore, but what are you doing? Nobody suggested any other names except Yokets. I was on that phone call. There was one other suggestion, and that was also an Indigenous word. So, that’s the only name that came up, and there was plenty of time for input. We were down here two years ago asking for a meeting on this from you folks. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman-
Pardon me?
We have exceeded the 15 minutes with this topic, and if members of the audience, if you would hold your applause so that people, so that the governing board can hear each individual, that would be really appreciated.
Were you able to hear that? So, we’ve exceeded the 15 minutes regarding the-
Squaw Valley topic.
So, if you have something else to speak about.
It’s self-start here, she’s-
Well, we had 15 minutes, I’m sorry. 15 minutes. We said that at the, we said that at the start of the-
But silencing some of us, then you could have done it to two-
No, ma’am, I’m not. We made it very clear at the start that it was 15 minutes per topic. We’ve exceeded that topic.
You’re not here, you’re not expanding it now.
Well, I’m sorry.
Public comment, it’s not a topic, it’s public comments.
Public comments. Thank you. The Chairman has spoke.
And your comments?
Adhere to what they’re saying. Ma’am, ma’am, are you speaking on a different topic, other than the topic that we’ve heard from the eight other individuals?
Uh, yes.
You’re speaking on a different topic?
Yes.
Okay.
I have a quote from Dolly Parton. When she had to remove the name Dixie from an attraction at her amusement park, it was, it used to be called the Dixie Stampede, and when she was asked why she changed it, Dolly Parton said, “When they said Dixie was an offensive word, I thought, I don’t want to offend anybody. This is a business, business. We’ll just call it Stampede. As soon as you realize that something is a problem, you should fix it. Don’t be a dumbass.” Thank you.
Hi, Stacy Williams, and I live here in Fresno. Brian Pacheco is my representative, and we talked earlier about public process, and you said, Steve, that there wasn’t a public process for a hearing on the topic before about Cesar Chavez. I think that you also have failed to do public process when it suits you and when it’s convenient for you. You want to uphold your own white supremacist values without having public process to see. There’s been public process, and it’s been gone, because now you want to silence people, now you want to tell people they can’t talk. I’m wondering where the public process is before you brought up any kind of lawsuit. We want to be heard, and we want a public process, just like you said before. The city council has a public process, you should have a public process as well. You don’t allow us to email, to call in, those get tossed away. We have to show up in person and wait our turn, and then you limit our times and say we can’t speak because it’s not convenient for you, but everybody else sitting at home can’t give an email, they can’t call in, because where do those go? Those don’t go onto the notes, right? They don’t get heard, they don’t get put in the notes, so the public process here at the City Board of Supervisors is broken, not everybody is heard, and it’s apparent by this woman over here, and all five of you, actually five, six, seven white men sitting up here, that you want to silence people of color and due process.
Hello, I wasn’t able to make it earlier, but I was watching online, and I would just wanted to bring up some, or reiterate some points that were brought up earlier, because I wasn’t able to be here, and as she said, we’re not able to, well, we are able to email, but that’s not read out loud for the meeting, and there’s no way to make public comment through the Zoom, through the live web stream. So, I just wanted to say that I do agree that we should have our sheriffs have body cams so that we can, like a comrade over there said, so that we can watch all their inadequacies and see where they’re messing up, so that we can have accountability for our sheriff’s department. Additionally, I would like to say on the topic of S-Valley, I don’t care if we already talked about it, I’m going to go ahead and say it. I don’t think that we should be cutting off people’s times to comment. I think that that’s completely stupid, it’s wrong, you’re silencing people who have valid opinions. There was due process for this, it was, been going on for over two years, so to say that there was no, that there was no due process, that people didn’t have a say, is just straight-up BS. And so, I would like for you guys to be accountable for, for all of that stuff, and to make sure that the people’s demands are heard, and to make sure that the people’s demands are met. We pay you guys, and I don’t think that we should be paying taxpayer dollars for this stupid lawsuit. And I also don’t think that we should be bringing any sort of opposition to the name Cesar Chavez Boulevard for that change on Kings Canyon. I think that it’s, I’m not, I’m not even sure why that’s an issue, or why there are members here opposed to it, but as a taxpaying member of the Fresno community, like, I would just like to say that you all need to do better, and we shouldn’t be cutting off people. Thank you.
Just a friendly reminder to the audience, should you wish to email the board, you may do so, because our agenda states what email address you can use. Clerk, clerkbos@fresnocounty.ca.gov.
Hi, can I go now? This is my first time here, I’ve never done this before, but you know, I’m kind of nervous, so the last time I did this, I swear, I was like in the second grade, I was on stage, and my sister, we were doing like a thing for dance and stuff, like a company, a show, and I just danced fast under the music, so just apologize if I get out of-
You’re doing a great job.
I’m nervous, I’ve never done this before, so my sister was mad at me for the whole two years after that, but, okay. By the way, my name is Dionisha, right? Okay. And I live in District 3. I just started as a care provider for a recipient of mine, which is the name of Bobby Wade. Well, okay. Okay, for the name of Bobby Wade, who needs a lot of care because he can’t, he got a lot of problems going on with his, where he can’t turn his wrist, or, you know, and he’s needing these extra services for, for you guys to help us with, as far as the help. I’m getting nervous, oh my God, okay. Okay, I’m sorry. Okay, we’re here today to ask you all to prioritize home care workers and work we do. You have the power to do what’s, you have the power to do what’s right. You have the opportunity to wake up and dress up, not having to worry about taking care of someone who has a disability. So, today, I actually got up before I even came, I got up earlier than what I usually do, and I went to work at 5:30 this morning, and I took care of my recipient and did a few things that I mostly do on a daily basis, which is, I take care of him, I clean his behind, take showers for him, but I don’t get paid enough for it. And I’m even there days that I don’t, I don’t have to be there, you know what I mean? He’s more of a friend to me, and he’s my client, you know? I’ve been doing this for six months, but I’ve also been doing it without, before I was getting paid for him, you know? I was there for him when he needed it. So, I was just asking if you guys can please prioritize, prioritize, prioritize home care workers, and I’m sorry, I’m nervous, but thank you for listening to me, and I appreciate it, okay?
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Elidia. I live in District 3. So, Quintero is the supervisor of my district. I’m an ICSAS provider. I do so many things for a lady that her family can do for her. Sometimes, I have to stay longer because I feel bad leaving her depressed. This is, um, well, this is my first talking to all of you. I want to ask you to please prioritize home care providers like me. When we give you our proposal today, please show us your support. Thank you so much for giving me the time to talk to you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon.
My name is Yolanda Perez Romero.
My name is Yolanda Perez Romero.
I pertainesco al Distrito Uno, la Brian Pacheco.
I belong to District 5, Mr. Brian Pacheco.
Y si, heh, heh sido proveedor-
I have been a, an ICSAS provider-
Por dos años.
For two years.
Ah, cuido al señor Arturo Flores y Celatina Orozco.
I take care of Arturo Flores and Josefina Orozco.
Estamos aquí para pedir la petición-
And we’re here to request-
De un contrato, un salario de 20 dólares y servicios médicos accesibles.
A contract or a salary of $20 an hour in medical services.
Porque mis clientes y yo tenemos muchos retos en el programa.
Because my clients and I have been waiting for a long time, and we’ve been in the program for a long time.
Son adultos mayores.
They’re older, elderly people.
Y necesitan muchas, este, muchas atenciones.
They need a lot of care.
En todos los aspectos, por su edad.
In all aspects, because they’re so advanced in age.
Yo hago esto porque algún día yo voy a llegar a esa edad.
I do this, because one of this, I’m going to get there like them in the future.
Y la mayoría vamos a llegar a esa edad donde-
And we’re all going to go through that.
De donde hay veces los, nuestros propios familiares no van a tener el tiempo de asistirte.
Where perhaps our own family members will not be able to help us.
Entonces, la gente que ya trabajó por 30 años.
So, people that had worked for 30 years.
Yo creo que sí necesita la atención de alguien que atienda sus necesidades.
I believe that they need somebody that will help take care of them.
Y no es justo que, porque después de trabajar 30 años, le estén poniendo a una persona que nada más le pueda cuidar por cuatro horas.
And I don’t think that some, some people, they need more help than four or hours a day.
Cuando él ya trabajó toda su vida.
When he’s been working all his life.
Y, y, y la persona que lo está ayudando lo puede hacer voluntariamente, pero también necesitamos un sueldo.
Most times, the care, the care worker will do extra hours, just free, free time out of their not getting paid, but we also need to get paid, because that’s a very important job that we do.
Por eso estamos aquí para, para que atiendan esta petición de que, de que, por favor.
We’re here to, to request.
Necesitamos más horas.
That we need to have our hours expanded.
Ajá, y nuestro salario pues también.
And our salary also.
Si nos van a dar pocas horas, pero que nos, que nos respeten el salario también.
If you’re going to get less hours, please, we request, request a better salary. Because we just cannot make ends meet with the hours that we’re working and the hourly wage.
Ni me beneficia a mí, ni beneficia a mi.
Yeah, I don’t get a benefit, and my client doesn’t get a benefit either. So, please, make-
Es lo que estamos aquí, muchas gracias.
That’s what we’re here for, and thank you very much for giving me the time.
I’ll be very brief. My name is Sean Verdin. I attend most of these meetings, and the ones that I can’t, I do watch online. And on the topic of Squaw Valley, I was here for that meeting as well when that was last brought up in the chambers, and I know Supervisor Magzig took that issue very seriously, issued a survey out to all the rest of the-
We spent the 15 minutes.
I’ll be very quick. I promise.
Sorry, I gotta-
I know that everything was followed to the T.
Yeah, thank you.
And that you listened to the vast, vast majority of the residents that live within that region and are properly representing the residents that live there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public portion of the, of the meeting. Next, Clerk.
Mr. Chairman, if there’s no public comment for closed session, you may, we can defer to our council to find out if-
Any public comment for closed session? Okay, County Council, will we have anything to report out, or can we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, we do not expect any reports out of closed session today, so if the board chooses, they may adjourn following closed session.
Okay. Thank you, everyone, for attending today.
Mr. Chairman, if you-
I’ll entertain a motion in a second to adjourn. Well, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes.
side Church of God since the 1970s. He also started nonprofit Southwest Fresno Development Corporation, established a counseling center to meet the needs of our community, and developed an education and career initiative-